Welcome to the February 16th, 2021 special meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. We will have one closed session agenda item. Ms. Clerk?
Closed session item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Board action.
Thank you. Any public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
With that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Welcome back to the Tuesday, February 16th, 2021 special meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am Clerk, would you like to do a report out on closed session, please?
Yes. Closed session one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. We'd like to move on to staff announcements. Any staff have any announcements?
Yes, good morning, Supervisors, Chair Stopper, and respective members of the Board, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Last Friday and Saturday, our Animal Services Department held a free microchip and adoption event. Our Animal Services team microchipped over 23 animals. We only had one dog to be adopted because fortunately the week prior, since we've been sending out advertisements for this event, we had already adopted out several animals. We would also like to send a big shout out and a huge thank you to our volunteers who donated over 201 hours in January. Our volunteers walk our dogs, clean cages, help in the office, assist animal services with events, and add to the camaraderie of our department. Our Animal Services team, in partnership with Friends of Calaveras Animal Services Focus, are planning on providing free rabies clinics in April, May, June, September, October, and December 2021. More information will be provided with specific dates during staff announcements at upcoming Board of Supervisors meetings, and we will also share those events and the specific dates through our various media sources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
I do not see any other staff announcement.
That will conclude our staff announcements. Next, we have the public health update. Public Health Services received an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. Mr. Leach.
Good morning, members of the Board and residents of Calaveras County. Thank you again for allowing me to present today and to be a small part of this county's fight against COVID-19. Here is the most current data as of this morning. We have completed since the beginning 22,143 tests for COVID. We've had 1,825 positive COVID tests. There are currently 78 active cases. We've had 1,722 recovered, four active hospitalizations, and 25 fatalities. As of right now, the number of doses, of vaccine doses, that have gone into arms of Calaveras County residents is 6,860. So that's an increase of roughly 2,000 in the past week. This week, public health is, I'm sorry, the past, last week, public health received 100 doses. We were anticipating getting more, but my understanding is those doses will come this week. And we remain in the same tiers as far as who's getting vaccinated. We have Phase 1A and Phase 1B Tier 1. A few important notes for this week. The best thing you can do to help in this fight against COVID, frankly, is to not get COVID. So we continue to encourage you to please wear a mask, avoid large gatherings, keep your social distancing, wash your hands, and if you're sick, please stay home. Another thing I want to encourage people is, please go get tested. I know that the surge has, you know, come and gone a little bit, but we still have a pretty high case count out there. We are still in the purple tier. As of today, we're still in the purple tier, which is the most restrictive tier for our businesses. So we want to make sure that we are working together as a community to get us to a less restrictive tier. One of the things that you do when you go get tested, even as a healthy individual, is you stop or slow the asymptomatic spread. So what that means is you may be somebody who appears to be healthy, but you may actively have COVID, and you may spread it to somebody who then ends up not being healthy when they get it. So we would encourage even people who are healthy, please go use our free testing sites. And the other thing it does is it helps our testing positivity rate, which is one of the two metrics that the state uses to move us into a less restrictive tier. So please, go get tested. Now that said, we've got testing today at Ironstone from 7:00 to 7:00. We still have the OptumServ site up in Sonora. And then we also have the, tomorrow, there is testing from 10:00 to 1:00, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the West Point Community Hall. Our new case and positivity rates, which are the two metrics that we look at to try to get out of the purple tier, are really starting to improve. But right now, we're still in the purple tier. We're getting closer and closer. Hopefully, we're a week out, maybe two weeks at most. I hope. The state runs those numbers once a week, and I believe we're really close to moving to a less restrictive tier. Please keep doing your part. And the part about healthy people testing, that's a really important part of this. But it's also about less people getting COVID. And so please, do the things that I said at the start, you know, the mask, stay home if you're sick, slow the spread, alright? Other updates, obviously, we still need supply to increase, to get to the point where we can have larger scale clinics like what you see in the larger urban areas. We would need significantly more supply to be able to do that. You know, that said, if you look at the state vaccination rates and data on the state websites, clearly, we are more than holding our own, and at the very least, in, I would say that we're vaccinating people proportionately, you know, very well in line with what the rest of the state is doing, and in some ways doing better. Seventy, I was looking at the data yesterday, and 70% of our vaccine doses have gone to the 65-plus population, which is a good thing. That's clearly the folks who've really been impacted by this and the folks that are most vulnerable. So we want to make sure that those folks are getting doses, and we are seeing that locally. OES and Public Health met last week on February 10th. We're meeting again today. We've been discussing command structure as well as planning for small, medium, and large-scale clinics in the future so that we can adapt as allocations fluctuate. We do anticipate getting a larger allocation this week. I can't say exactly what that will be, but it, you know, it won't be 100. So last week was a down week. This week should be an up week. And it's, you know, remains unpredictable, but at least, you know, if you look at it over the past month, we have gotten a steady flow. And then frankly, a lot of other providers, the MCEs, as I say, the multiple county entities, are getting allocation straight from the federal government and the state government. They're not coming through us, so want to clarify that. We are seeing appointments, and you've probably known people who have gotten vaccine doses, whether it's at CVS, or Rite Aid, or Walgreens, depending where you live. And then, of course, we have a partnership with Mark Twain, who's been doing a fantastic job making sure they get doses into arms. And we do have Doug Archer on the call, so in a moment, I will turn it over to him. Couple last things to say. Oh, I'm sorry, on the pharmacies that I just mentioned, my understanding is they are offering the vaccine to the 65-plus population as well as medical providers who, for some reason, haven't already gotten it. So those are the folks that it appears to be available. You, you know, I'd encourage you, all of those places have websites for vaccination. I will clarify that not every local location within the mother lode is offering the vaccines. So I will, I will leave it to the public to check on that because I do believe that's a fluid situation. So I don't want to say which locations are offering and then have that not be true, you know, an hour later. I believe they're adding sites all the time. They don't communicate directly with us at Public Health. So it would be, you know, I would encourage the public to keep an eye on that if you're looking for an alternative. And then frankly, there are some folks, you know, who are more mobile, and if they can get an earlier appointment and drive down to a Rite Aid or a Walgreens in the valley, I don't see any harm in doing that. Those pharmacies are getting their allocations directly from the federal government, and they don't appear to be holding anything to the county-by-county standard. So for us in Public Health, we're vaccinating Calaveras residents. Mark Twain is vaccinating Calaveras residents, and the only exception will be for people who work here, right? So if you're just a resident of another county and you don't work in Calaveras County, then you're not coming to Mark Twain or Calaveras Public Health for your vaccine. But you may be accessing one of the pharmacies, and that's fine. You know, if shots are going into arms of Calaveras residents, that's a good thing. Matters to us very little as to who's actually giving the dose. We just want to get closer to the herd immunity. Let's see, I think that's the main stuff. I will say that we are working to get on board with the state's MyTurn system. The MyTurn system is the online registration system that the state expects us to use moving forward. We were hoping to be online this week. That didn't happen. And now the state has given every county in the state a date when they will be able to go live. Go live meaning be able to actively use the site. So our go-live date is March 7th. So we are hoping that that holds. It is a few weeks further out than we were hoping for, but at least we do have clarity for when that is. And right now, frankly, at Public Health, the vaccinations that we're doing are by invite only. So we will continue to be doing that through March 7th, and we will use temporary measures between now and then for how we register people for those clinics. So if you're invited, you'll be told how to register. That is the extent of my update. I want to turn it over to our colleague Doug Arch. Oh, I should have mentioned that I have Dr. Beatty, our county, our interim county health officer, on here as well. So he's available for questions if anybody has any that are more specifically medical in nature. And then we also have Doug Archer. So Doug, sorry for the detour there, but the floor is yours for an update from the Mark Twain Medical Center.
Great. Thanks, Sam. Uh, let's see, so starting with the hospital. We actually only have one COVID patient in-house right now. They're in the ICU, but we only have one in-house at this point, which I feel like is a good sign. Hopefully, we're, we're going to see that trend continue. ER has been pretty steady. We've been, yesterday was a pretty busy day, actually. Over the weekend, we're roughly about 30 a day, which is about our average. But yesterday, let's see, yesterday was 36, so a little higher than normal. Staffing-wise, it's actually kind of a nice little break. Our census is down. So our staff are taking a well-deserved breather, and hopefully not a breather before the next wave. Hopefully, we're rounding the corner here. So as Sam mentioned, last week was kind of a tough week in terms of supply for vaccines. I'm not blaming Blue Shield and/or Kaiser, but I think with them kind of getting involved, things took a bit of a pause last week as they assessed the situation. I know we had some data requests that were sent over to them. So I would expect this week, things to lighten up and see a little bit more vaccine inventory. So last week, we had a busy, busy vaccine week. To date, let's see, to date, we've given just short of 3,000 vaccines. This week started our first round of second doses. And this week, we will give about 1,200, almost 1,250 doses. So many of those are second doses. 860, in fact, are second doses. So it gets kind of confusing at this point when we're doing firsts and seconds. But, but know that about 1,200 vaccines will go into arms this week. And by the end of this week, at least from the Mark Twain clinics, we'll have given about 4,100 doses to the community members age 65 and over. Today, we are hosting a clinic up in Arnold, at our Arnold Clinic in the Big Trees Market Shopping Center there. And I believe we had, I know, I reached out to Supervisor Callaway yesterday for some help in spreading the word, and that was very successful. Thank you, Supervisor Callaway. I think we're going to do 180 today, hopefully, maybe get to 200, but at least 180 today in Arnold. So, and, you know, I know from the, I guess, the spectator view, you know, the outside looking in, it can seem kind of haphazard the way we're scheduling. But for instance, last week, we expected our shipment to arrive on Tuesday. Instead, it showed up on Wednesday, and we did not start scheduling our Thursday clinic until Wednesday. So we were really behind the eight ball all week, just from a logistics standpoint. We don't like to schedule those appointments until the vaccine shows up on our campus. There's enough challenges with getting it here that it just makes sense to us that we wait until the vaccine's on hand before we start scheduling. So again, we're just a little behind the eight ball since the vaccine showed up a little bit late. Thursday, we were actually doing vaccines until 8:15 Thursday night, trying to get as many in as we could, so. Yeah, so it's just, it's been very busy, but it's a good thing. You know, again, 1,200, 1,250 almost vaccines going out this week, so. Our scheduling process is really, has not changed. We've attempted a couple of different options for like online scheduling, and that just has not tested well. So we're continuing with our current process, which is you call the number, get on the waitlist. As soon as we get vaccine, we call you in. We have done a really good job, actually, in addressing the oldest of our 65 and older. We are, at least by, by our account, yesterday morning, we had everyone born before 1940 that was on our waitlist had been vaccinated. So that's, that's a really good thing. Happy to hear that CVS and some of the other partners are starting to provide vaccines as well. So hopefully, you know, if everybody's working together and getting vaccines in arms, we'll turn the corner faster. I think that was, that's really it from my end, but I'm, you know, happy to answer any questions you may have. Oh, I'm sorry, one, one more. If you do hear from people in the community, one challenge we've had is people show up very early for their vaccines. So I think it's a, it's specific to this population as well. So, you know, we have people scheduled for 10:30 that are showing up at 9:00 o'clock. And, and then, you know, they, they see this line starting to pick up because everyone's showing up early, and then they call their friends and say, oh, you got to get there early because there's a line. Well, the reason why we have the line is because everyone's showing up early. So we have a pretty solid process, I think. So if you show up at, you know, 10:25 for your 10:30 appointment, you're going to be just fine. So if you could help us spread the word. The result is, we're kind of clogging up a parking lot, and it's, it's scaring people away when they pull up and they see a line gathering. People show up, you know, pretty close to their appointment time, things go a lot smoother, so. If you'd be willing to share that, it would be good. Other than that, I think that's all for my report. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Any questions? And Marita, I can't see your light if you do have it on. Alright, you don't have to put it up, or just raise your hand. I'll see, I'll see your hand, Ms. Callaway.
I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Archer or Mr. Leach. I guess it's two-fold questions. How does Kaiser and Blue Shield dovetail with the allocation process? Will Dignity no longer be giving it to Mark Twain? It'll be coming from Kaiser, and Blue Shield will then be giving it to the cities and counties? And if so, what's their protocol, population, age? How, how will we be getting it? And then, Mr. Leach, you mentioned that 75% of the allocation was going to 65-plus. Is that cumulative, what Mark Twain's doing? The part of the allocation that you're giving to Mark Twain? So it's, it's, I feel like I'm watching a shell game, and I'm just trying to understand the rules. And, and one more, as long as I'm. On My, when MyTurn, when we start using MyTurn, will people then no longer be calling Mark Twain to get on a list? I mean, how is that system going to work for the county and the CVS part of that? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll start with the easy one, which is the MyTurn system. At this time, I know that Mark Twain does not have, is not planning to go on to MyTurn. So they will still have their own registration process. You know, MyTurn was really an effort for the state to have kind of data transparency from the local public health departments and to get us all registering because, you know, we don't normally do the same electronic medical records processes that, that like Dignity Health would do, where they can register in their vaccine finder and make sure that everything is connected to what the state data needs. So they can have their own processes. So, but for us, as local health jurisdictions, we're different, so we're being required to use the MyTurn when that time comes. And frankly, the MyTurn is in some way connected to this third-party administrator, the third-party administrator being Blue Shield. So, you know, their role is still being clarified. I got a memo this morning, you know, after 8:00, so I frankly have not read that memo. Getting a little bit more clarity on the third-party administrator. But really, a lot of it frankly boils down to data and the state being accountable for the vaccines and being able to track where those vaccines are going. So Blue Shield is helping with that because frankly, I believe the state believed that Blue Shield could do a better job of making sure that the valid, the vaccine allocation gets out in the fair and equitable and systematic manner that the state wants it to get out. So that's really, you know, from the 30,000-foot view, that's their, that's Blue Shield's role as a third-party administrator. There's a little bit more to it than that, but I don't have a whole briefing on that available right now. You said 75%. Supervisor Callaway, it's actually 70% is the number of six, the percentage of vaccine doses that have gone into arms in Calaveras County. 70% of those have gone to people 65 or older. Okay, and yes, that is in part because of the fantastic work that Mark Twain has done in working with that population. Obviously, they've been very efficient, and they've done, well, close to half, maybe 40%, roughly, of all the doses that have gone into arms have been done by Mark Twain. They've got an efficient clinic there, and that's been their focus, is the 65-plus. So that is a big part of the reason, and we're really thankful for their efforts. Now, obviously, with pharmacies coming on board, frankly, if somebody who's living in Arnold decides, well, I can get an appointment in Galt at the Rite Aid, and they drive down there and they get, they get their dose there, that still counts on our statistics. It's a Calaveras resident getting a dose, doesn't matter where they got the dose. Ultimately, that gets counted here in our numbers, in the state numbers for vaccine doses for Calaveras residents. Okay, so we're happy to see those numbers panning out the way they are, quite frankly. And I think I got all three of your questions. Did I get them all, Supervisor Callaway?
Yeah, sort of. How does Kaiser fit in on this?
I'm not, I'm not really sure yet. So I do know that Dignity Health will continue to receive vaccines, and they will allocate to us, for instance. But I, I believe, and this is completely just me trying to make sense of this, I believe that Kaiser is, you know, more the care delivery specialist in this partnership. You know, Blue Shield doesn't actually deliver care. So I think Kaiser will probably do the heavy lifting in terms of setting up the major vaccine sites. That's a guess, but it seems to make sense.
And Colleen Rodriguez, you're on the call. I'm going to, I'm going to ask Colleen to speak. She knows a little bit more about the MyTurn info as well as the role of Kaiser Permanente. So, Colleen, are you prepared to speak about Kaiser's role and their part in the third-party administrator?
Yeah, good morning, everyone. So Kaiser Permanente is kind of in partnership, to my understanding, is in partnership with Blue Shield. And they're considered the third-party administrators for allocating to the state, from the state, sorry, to local jurisdictions. What we've been told is that it was essential to include Kaiser because they have something like 25% of all of the clinical care in the state. And so they are joining together. Whether or not they will provide that clinical backbone, I'm not sure. We did just get the information today from the state, and so I will also be in the process of reviewing that. Back to MyTurn, though, I wanted to just provide some clarity for Supervisor Callaway and for everybody in Calaveras. The way that MyTurn works is, it is a, it serves many purposes, but the big purpose and the purpose that probably most of the people in the county care about is it serves as a scheduling mechanism. And we in Public Health, once we get onboarded onto MyTurn, it will allow us to set up clinics that will have certain hours, certain appointments available, and certain criteria for people to meet. And so we will be able to set those clinics up so that when somebody goes, if you've previously registered into MyTurn, it will, it will let you know, hey, a clinic has opened up that you are qualified for, and you can go and register for it. Or folks can go on and register for one of those appointment times. And so we kind of, we control what's on there in terms of what appointments we have, what vaccine is available, and what clinics are, we're running. So I hope that helps, helps people understand a little bit more about the purpose of MyTurn. So I hope that helps, helps people understand a little bit more about the purpose of MyTurn. As Sam said, on the state side of it, they really care about that because they're keeping track of all of the data. So they're keeping track of how many clinics were running, how many vaccine were getting into arms, people's, you know, dates of birth and ages required, you know, all of that kind of stuff that they really care about, that will be in there. And then the tertiary part of MyTurn that's really helpful for us is that it will be directly reporting to the state instead of us having to do that separate step of having to input all of the data into our state reporting system.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Guerra Mendi.
I just wanna get-
Oh, my apologies, Ms. Callaway.
I just wanna get clarification. The county will be using MyTurn, but Mark Twain will not be using MyTurn. But they're all Calaveras residents, so how does that begin to then feed to how the county's doing? And I, I'm having trouble comprehending how the allocations determine. I was on a CSAC call last week and there was not a county supervisor in the state that was not talking about supply. And, but I'm still not clear, Mr. Leach, how we get our allocation. And I, thank you for saying that, you know, we're at least getting our fair share because there were counties saying they were only getting 50. So could you please go over that again? Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know, Sam. Did you want me to address that?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Colleen. I mean, there's still a lot of points that lack clarity. Like, we've gotten the big picture view, but, you know, getting into the weeds on that, I don't know how clear that is, but you go ahead, Colleen.
So Supervisor Callaway, I think that the confusion is 100% real. We've asked repeatedly from the state to give us clarification on that and they are unclear because a lot of it is actually, the vaccine actually is delivered directly from the feds. So one of the things that we have heard is that they, for a while, were allocating it based on the number of healthcare providers that we had counted in the county. And then it has since changed to the number of, or it's about to change, to the number of 65-plus folks that we have in the county with some kind of formula. But your confusion and my confusion and everyone's confusion, I think, is exactly why the state has moved to the TPA, the third-party administrator, so that there will be more transparency in how that allocation is calculated and how those numbers are, how they come to those numbers and why certain jurisdictions get, you know, certain amounts of allocation. So while the TPA is a little bit confusing right now, they have made their contracts completely transparent and have put it out. And I believe it's available on a state website also. And so in that, I think we will start to see more transparency about how those numbers are calculated. But as Sam has said, we've, we have been fortunate in that we have received a steady amount of vaccine and we assume and are planning to continue to get a steady amount so that we can continue to vaccinate more and more Calaveras residents.
Yeah, I wanna add to that, that, you know, the state's goal of making sure that this gets done equitably has, I guess, in a little bit been, I don't know that it's a bad thing. I mean, it's a good thing that the pharmacies are coming onboard. But, you know, if they wanted to do this very systematically and stick to, well, we wanna make sure that part of your allocation is, is based on, are you reaching the right populations? Right? And when you start throwing in then a completely separate allocation that's not controlled by the state, that comes from the feds directly to the pharmacies, and then those pharmacies, you know, clearly they're, they're just at the starting point, but they're gonna be putting a lot of shots into arms. So I'm not sure how the state expects to adjust our allocations based on percentages that they would say we're not meeting, when frankly, you know, the pharmacies are getting shots and they're just saying, hey, if you're 65-plus or you're a medical provider, show on up. Well, you're gonna get disproportionate contact by doing it that way over time. So, you know, I'm not sure how the state plans to, you know, hold us accountable if we're not meeting specific demographic targets that they would want us to meet, you know, based on that. So we need a lot of clarity from the state. That said, sometimes I think we invent problems that aren't there. Right now, we're getting a lot of shots into arms. We're starting to move faster than I thought we were gonna be moving at this point. And I don't mean we, public health. I mean, we as a nation and we as a state, percentage-wise, we're starting to get a lot of doses in and the supply is still increasing. So I think we, you know, it's important that we delve into the details and understand them and try to get clarity from the state. At the same time, doses are coming, they're going into arms. And I'm really happy to see that. Feels a lot better than it did in mid-January, a month ago, because not just for our part, but there's a lot of help that's coming. And I appreciate all that help. I don't care if it's Rite Aid or if Walmart comes onboard or Safeway or who it is, you know, the more, the more of these folks that are helping, frankly, it takes some pressure off of us and off of Mark Twain who, you know, you were our first partner in this fight, right? So we love you guys, but we'll take all the help we can get out there when it comes to these federal allocations. We just wanna make sure the state doesn't then, you know, hold us accountable for something that CVS or Rite Aid or anybody else is doing. So we will fight for that. I'll keep you guys posted if we, if we get more. I'm back next week, so by then I will have read the memo. I don't know if the memo will provide every bit of clarity that we need and I expect changes. So we'll see. But we'll keep you posted as we go, Supervisor Callaway. And hopefully, just seeing the number of doses going into arms is enough to keep us happy for now, even as a proportion of county population. We're doing pretty well there.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Mr. Guerra Mendi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Sam. Thanks, Doug. Thanks, Colleen, for all being here today. I appreciate everything that's going on and how hard we're working. I can only imagine the confusion with CVS and Rite Aid now coming in. There's a quick correction. Sam, when you were talking about CVS and you're enthusiastic about them putting needles in arms, which we all are, you said we don't, it matters little to us who gets them. I think it does matter to us and I know it matters to you also. We wanna take care of that 1A, 1B in our vulnerable populations first. Hopefully, CVS will be following those same guidelines, but I can, I mean, whatever we say today will probably change by noon if the state has a press conference. Who knows what's gonna happen? So that's not on you guys. I think you're doing a good job. Try to coordinate like we did with Mark Twain, which is great partnership. Maybe CVS wants to be a partner with us like Mark Twain at some point. My question is, last week I asked how the partnership was going with OES and are we finding a way to spread the load so that your staff is able to continue to function at this high level over the long term? And I said I, so I wanna know how that's going, like some examples, how that's working out.
Yeah, I touched on that earlier, but basically, we met last week to establish rules. They met again without me at one point on purpose, definitely. And then we're meeting again today at lunchtime and what we're doing is we're really planning for the, planning for small clinics, which would be more travel clinics into outlying areas, planning for an intermediate step, which would be kind of a medium-sized clinic. So just to put rough numbers on there, let's say we can only do 100 vaccines at a small travel clinic where we're doing a targeted outreach to a 75-plus population. Let's say there's an intermediate step where maybe it's 300 or 400 doses that we're doing at a set location somewhere else, but it's larger than what we can currently do out of our, our small public health facility. And then obviously, we wanna plan for a larger one in the event that all of a sudden we start getting thousands and thousands of doses, that we'd want to do a large drive-through style clinic. So what we've been doing is working on the rules because getting, getting the rules established for what we already, what exists now, what we need, what public health requirements are, and then balancing that with what OES can provide in terms of outreach and logistics, sites that we can use, who they can bring to the table, some of the, you know, getting more into the weeds of things we need, like making sure we can get Wi-Fi service and power and backup in the tents and transporting people, parking, security, all these kind of things. So working on some of that, but we have to do it because of the lack of predictability with regard to allocation. It's, it makes things a little more complicated for us because we're also, keep in mind Supervisor Guerra Mendi, being expected by the state that when we get doses, they go into arms within seven to 10 days. So if we sit on vaccines, they're going to, they're threatening anyway, to reduce our allocations. So we're playing by those rules and we're making sure that we don't sit on vaccines. We never wanted to anyway, to be quite frank, other than making sure we had second doses available for populations, especially in the early, early stages of this. So hopefully that helps. Doubling back to your comment, what I meant, I don't know what I said, I apologize, but what I meant was it doesn't matter who's getting the doses. To me, I wasn't referring to who's getting. Maybe I twisted my words there, I'm not sure.
Sam, you have good, I get what you, I know what you meant. I just, I didn't want the public to think that's not what you meant.
Appreciate that.
Sam, my next question is, and I appreciate that, I'm glad you guys are working with OES as the board directed to try to figure out how to spread that workload. And we talked about transparency before and the fact that this new deal with Blue Shield. I would hope that perhaps in the next meeting or between now and then, I or maybe this board could get an update on how we're doing on the money. These are, you know, I know there's been allocations from feds and from the state. They don't go through this board, but we are ultimately responsible. And so I would like an update on how we're doing on that if the board is interested. Or you could just give it to me offline sometime, but I would like to know how we're doing. This is all costing money and I wanna see how that's going.
Yeah, we're, well, it, I guess that would depend on how much detail you want. If you want a full budget, you know, presentation and line items and all of that. I'm presenting again next week. It would take a lot of my time to be prepared to do that next Tuesday, to be quite frank.
But Sam, it might be, it might be one of those things that perhaps admin could look at. I don't need to have a detailed budget. I just wanna know where the money's coming from and in general terms, how we're do, what we're doing with it. Because while that money came directly from the state to different departments, we as your board are ultimately responsible for how it's spent.
Yeah, so the quick, the quick update that I can give you, Supervisor Guerra Mendi, just off the top of my head, always dangerous, right, is that we got a first round of ELC funding. The ELC funding that we received was $1.7 million. That was board-approved, Colleen, correct me if I'm wrong, November 17th, I believe, by the board. So that spending plan for that first round was approved in mid-November. I believe it was around the 17th of November. And because that was approved pretty late in the process, if you think about how much money we were spending prior to that, that money hasn't really been spent down, which is, which is understandable. I mean, we're, we're pretty far behind on getting that approved and getting that plan into action, but our needs have been pretty well-covered out of that and we've got a lot of spending needs coming up, right? Well, then in addition to that, the state has announced that we have another $2.4 million allocation coming in a second round of ELC funding. But these funds go through, Colleen, correct, Colleen, go ahead and jump in, but we've got a few years to spend these funds and we need to be considerate of that. Colleen, do you have the dates handy for when those funds run through and how long we have to spend them for each round?
So I just wanted to clarify one thing, excuse me, for the 1.7 that we got that did go through the board, the feds, and I think it's confusing because everything that we get is called CARES or ELC and they're all from different places, right? So the 1.7 that we got had a very specific work plan associated with it. There were really, I think there were six areas that the state told us we had to focus on. And so our hands were a little bit tied with that. And so that money that was put through the board, that money is, we're still trying to do all of the things that the board, that the state told us we had to do with the 1.7. With the 2.4, excuse me, we have actually yet to receive the letter from the feds or the state actually confirming that amount. And so I just wanna be clear that we, the state dropped us a line and said, hey, you know, you're, you're gonna be getting this money, but we still haven't received a confirmation letter. We still haven't had any kind of webinar that goes through the process. We just got a very quick, down and dirty kind of number and some kind of really general ideas, but more specifics are to come. I've been told by two different sources that we will be getting more information by the end of the month, which will be next week. So I would hate to say something and then have the state contradict everything that I said in a webinar or in a letter. So I just wanna put that out there.
Thank you. And I apologize if that information came out on the 17th of November. I was sick that day and I will go back and read it in greater view and if I have questions, I'll contact you. I apologize if it's already known. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Good question on it, though. You know, we do wanna know how it's being spent and how it goes out, Mr. Guerra Mendi, whether we approved it or not. Mr. Toffenelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good questions, Supervisor Guerra Mendi and Callaway. Sam, you gave us a number of total shots been distributed as of yesterday of 6,860. But that number is not include CVS or Rite Aid or any other distributor that's been given the clearance to start giving vaccinations?
It does.
It does include that?
It does include those. Those are being tracked, yeah. In the early days, Supervisor Toffenelli, it did not. That was more confusing. Now it does. Okay, because we, we were originally, this is, this is the reason for the confusion, is when we were originally presenting you guys with data on vaccine doses, we were telling you what we've done locally, which is actually different than the number that the state tracks. The state was later than we were in having that data publicly available. And so once the state got it together and had that data readily available, their number actually became the more accurate, more important statistic because their data is specific to where you live. So it's the same as how the testing works. When you put your, it doesn't matter if you're in Modesto, but you're a Calaveras resident, doesn't matter where you got your shot, you're counted as a Calaveras dose. Okay, so that's, that's really good to know. So it does include CVS, Rite Aid, Mark Twain, us, should include Kaiser, pretty much anywhere that you get the shot. If your address is Calaveras, that's counting on the vaccine dose count.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. And that's great that we now have a combined number versus what we were giving just between you and Mark Twain that was being distributed there. So that was my question. Thank you very much.
Between, between all of you, you pretty much addressed everything I had written down here. You know, just some more questions on the MyTurn system. This will be, you know, you answered a majority of them. I'm still in the same position I was last week. Anything new with the state online sign-up system is bound to have some bugs going into it. We look at New York last week when they brought in their, their variation crashed after everybody signed up at the same time. And there, I, I- And, and I foresee that we're going to have to go through some, some of these same issues. So, I for one am happy that Mr. Archer and Mark Twain are continuing down their path. Just a question of Mr. Archer, if you don't mind, sir. The, you know, with people calling in, have we been able to return phone calls better? I haven't received as many phone calls saying I haven't, I haven't gotten a call back. So, I assume you're doing better. Are we, are we getting back to people a little quicker now? Are we ironing out our issues with the system?
I think so, it's definitely improved. But part of it is, is frankly, the understanding of the process. So, when people call our, our vaccine line, all they're doing is calling to be put on the waitlist. So, they shouldn't expect a call back until we have the vaccine to schedule them. And I think that's been the, the big hangup is a lot of people expect, "If I call today, get my name on the list, I should get a call within the next day or two." We tried to explain that in the voicemail prior to you leaving a message. We did start that robo-call process that I had mentioned previously that calls you back to confirm that you're on the waitlist. But again, you won't get a call from us until we're ready to schedule you. So, I, in a nutshell, I do think the process is improved. I think people are a little more familiar with it now. But if you're on the waitlist, it's still far from perfect. You're still sitting there waiting.
Excellent, good answer, I appreciate the information. I think a little clarity goes a long ways. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I do have another question.
Mr. Toffenelli.
Yeah, Mr. Archer, thank you for that information. Does that go to the second shot or the second dose also? Or do you, or do you give them, once they get scheduled and come in and get their first dose, at that point, do you give them a, a date to come back for their second?
Correct, yeah, as soon as you're scheduled for dose one, you're scheduled for dose two.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
If there's no other questions by board members, I'd like to give the public opportunity to make comment.
I do not see any public time, comment at this time.
We'll get, we'll give them just, just a few seconds here so that we, they, if they are on, online, that there is a delay. So, we'll give them the opportunity to call in. Just want to thank Mr. Leach and Mr. Archer for being on the call today. I think we're making good steps forward in, you know, our partnership. Although there were no questions, I want to thank Mr. Beatty for being here for the opportunity to answer anything if anything comes across.
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank, thank you. Well, gentlemen, thank you all very much, and ladies, Mr. Rodriguez was on the phone, so. You know, and we appreciate the good work, so please, please keep it up.
Thanks for the support.
With that, we'll move on to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think you skipped item three before public comment.
Oh, I, I did, I did. My apologies. Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli, I don't know what I'd do without you. So, item three, recognition and acknowledgements. Proclaim the month of February 2021 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Ms. Fuldorff.
Okay. So, I'm going to read this and bear with me. So, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Calaveras County, proclamation recognizing February 2021 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Whereas every year in each of California's 58 counties, 19 ordinary citizens take an oath to voluntarily serve on a term of one year as grand jurors. And whereas the grand jury system was brought to the United States with the colonists and the first grand jury in America was implemented in 1635. And whereas Calaveras County, one of the original 27 counties of the state, was organized at the 1849, 1850 session of the California State Legislature. And whereas the grand jury is truly an independent investigative body, operationally separate from the entities and officials they investigate and who are officers of the court under the guidance of the Calaveras County Superior Court Presiding Judge. And whereas certain responsibilities of the grand jury are mandated by state law and the grand jury has jurisdictional right to investigate city and county departments, school districts, and special districts. And whereas the grand jury is composed of 19 citizens who represent the citizens of the county and making recommendations for improvement to our local government. And whereas the grand jury decides the areas of local government they are going to investigate or review during the year, one of the most important functions of the grand jury is to review the operations of officers, departments, and agencies of local government and special district. And whereas the grand jury receives and reviews complaints from citizens within the county, and whereas the grand jury investigative process may or may not result in reports, those fact-finding reports identify specific problems and provide specific recommendations for governmental improvement and/or identify conventions. And whereas the grand jury is recognized for their dedicated service and their dedicated time volunteering to make Calaveras County Government and Special District entities more efficient and for the best interest of the community.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. At the, at this time, is there any comments by any board members? Okay, I'll give, and if you would like a public comment?
Yes, Chair Stoppa, we have Ms. McHenry and, oh, go ahead. Ms. McHenry and Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. McHenry.
Yes, good morning. My name is Brenda McHenry and I'm the foreperson of the current Calaveras Grand Jury and on behalf of the Motherlode Chapter of the California Grand Jurors Association, the current 2021 Calaveras Civil Grand Jury and previous grand juries here in Calaveras, thank you for this recognition. There are a lot of people who are not aware of the purpose and the services that grand juries perform. Usually response I've experienced from people I talk to is, "I was on a jury once", or, "What, an entire year?" As proclamation states, it is an independent investigative body. Jurors are officers of the Superior Court. It has the right to investigate county and city departments, school districts, and special districts within Calaveras County. That has a broad range and one of its first decisions is where to focus during the year. It receives complaints from the public. It reviews past reports and evaluates any need to return to a previous investigation. It looks at current events and determines whether there are issues to address. It always visits the jails. The grand jury's watchdog function over government is an important one. As part of the recent reports, we literally watch the dogs when reporting on the county's animal shelter. Managing government is not simple. Domestic democratic government is even less simple. Without citizen awareness of issues and problems, complacency can take over. If the people aren't paying attention or seem not to care, things can happen. Also, and importantly, when government is being innovative and management is doing its job well, people need to know about it. In these unusual times, recruiting jurors is not easy. Although we are meeting online as a group, the job requires, requires a fair amount of commitment to investigate, make decisions, and issue reports. It does take a year and sometimes more, as we recently experienced. But the rewards are wonderful. If they were airline miles, we could travel around the world, if we could travel at all. What makes it all worth the effort is learning about the county and how it functions, getting to know a group of folks who want to ask questions and get answers, and working towards a valuable and important result. So, I would urge anyone who wants to experience that to answer the request that you might receive from the Superior Court or contact them yourselves. Thank you for this opportunity and especially for this welcome recognition.
Ms. Dorothy?
Ms. Lloyd?
Lloyd, sorry.
Ms. Lloyd, are you with us?
I am with you.
Would you like to say something, Ms.?
I was not prepared to speak. However, I would like to again thank the Board of Supervisors for considering this proclamation again this year. We were very proud last year to receive this live. This is really a quite different way of, of doing it. But we're proud, the Motherlode Chapter, of which I am an officer, of the California Grand Jurors Association is very proud and very, actually very proud of our own board and the agencies in our county. The responsiveness that we have seen to the grand jury's recommendations and findings has been very positive and much, much appreciated. We, our service to our community has been very rewarding and to see that service honored is especially gratifying. Thank you very much.
Any other further comments?
No other further comments.
Well, Ms. McHenry and Ms. Lloyd, Ms. McHenry brought up, they were up at the animal shelter, literally watching the dogs. I just want to say this dog here thanks you for your service and keeping, for keeping us in line and, you know, I think your service is much needed. The grand jury far too often doesn't receive the credit it deserves and I for one am grateful, thank you. Any other comments by board members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Callaway, second by Mr. Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, passes on a 5-0 vote, Ms. Fuldorff.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, does hereby designate the month of February 2021 to be declared Civil Grand Jury Month in the Calaveras County and to encourage citizen participation in the grand jury process. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Toffenelli, am I good to move to public comment now?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for bringing that back up. It was something very important, I don't want to, you know, minimize it. The grand jury is appreciated. General public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any manner which, matter which is not posted in the agenda unless it is determined by, to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
At this time, there is no public comment?
We'll give it, I mean, within the time I read that, they know it's coming up. So, I'll give them a few more seconds and then, if nothing comes up, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Nothing?
No.
Okay. That will move on to the regular agenda. Agenda item four, receive information from staff and provide direction to staff on priorities and study sessions for 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board and members of the public that are with us today. I am sharing my screen and I'll bring the presentation up that I have for an outline today. Mr. Chair, is that clear to the board in, in the chambers?
Yes. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. But thank you for the opportunity today to discuss the board priorities again. As you'll note here on the slide, it's not just the purpose of today's study session, but the January study session as well. We've had opportunity in the January meeting to have a robust discussion about board goals and priorities and ultimately strategic planning and the CAO's goals as well. But we didn't zero in on specific priorities for the board for 2021. We did have some discussion about the cannabis program and jail mechanical systems in the January session, but as the board's aware, we did bring those back for information items in the last, board agenda last week. So, today, obviously, an important piece is to zero in on specific priorities for the 2021 year from the board. I also have brought back at the board's direction a, a draft and a review of what the strategic plan may look like. And we'll go through that, including strategic directions and I'll suggest tentative timelines for completion of strategic planning. Along with the board's priorities, we, it would be helpful for the remainder of the year, at least quarter by quarter, to identify specific items for study sessions in the coming months. And then, last but not least, what we did not do in the February, or the January session, is identify any specific goals for the CAO. So, we'll have opportunity to discuss those. As we get going, it's important to have not only the Board of Supervisors know, but our public know that, obviously, with any goals, priorities, or strategic planning, there's always going to be challenges. In our particular case, the county or realm wasn't built in a day. And so, it's important to note that we're currently staffed, in most cases, for the norm of day-to-day operational challenges. We're not staffed for peak events. And unfortunately for the County of Calaveras, we've seen our, our share of peak events in the last few years with quite a few PSPs, winter storms, as you know, with all the declarations we're carrying forward. Unfortunately, fires even, in addition to the, the Butte Fire, we've had many since then as well. And then, obviously, as we know from the ongoing public health updates, that the COVID response continues to be quite significant for us. And that's important because, as the board is aware, but our public may not be, that each time we have one of these emergencies, we pivot all available resources and point them at the direction of whatever the particular emergency of the day is. And that takes time off task, unfortunately, on our current staffing and resources from goals and priorities. So, some of the challenges I want to make clear for the board and our public, obviously, in the CAO's office, we've had a significant shift of staffing. And as you'll see when we look through the strategic plan, right now, currently, most of the priorities are admin office responsibilities. So, it is important to, to note that out of, you know, just, just over a year ago where we had three deputy CAOs, we only currently have one. And as the board knows, we are currently down three of the appointments. And as the Board knows, we are currently down three of the appointed department heads as well, so we continue to work through the hiring and restaffing of all of those particular areas, and those tend to be a priority right now. I talked a little bit about our day-to-day workload, but that's obviously something that happens and needs to happen regardless of the goals. Just the functions of running a county require a lot of transactional resources. We've discussed before, financial resources always being a challenge, but obviously, we're a resource-constrained county, but the Board always has opportunities as we look at the different goals and priorities of what I'll call flexing resources and looking at whether or not we would bring in any outside assistance. I know we've been historically uncomfortable with the response we get from some consulting services, but in some cases, depending on the item, we may look to bring in our time to completion by adding financial resources and, in some cases, consultants. Obviously, I talked about emergencies already. And then, one of the things that comes up on, for obvious reason, the Board has to discuss and take on really important things that come up during the course of the year that may become a priority on an impromptu basis without our discussion today. Off the top of my head, one of the things that I think about that we invested a lot of time and effort in, for good reason, last fall, was the FIRE JPA and the potential of putting that together. So, again, for obvious reasons, we support the desire of the Board to look at furthering priorities like that, but they also cause us to put on pause some of the other priorities that are already lined out at the beginning of the year. I know that's extremely editorial, but it helps contextualize some of the things that you'll see in the remainder of the presentation as we move forward. As I go to the next slide, I won't belabor a discussion that we've had many times already in previous presentations in November and February, but this is a slide that I pointed to. While you can't see all the slide, the mission, vision, values lives up in this area, which the Board has completed in previous efforts, and our annual goals live down in this section. So one of the things I made key point about in our last presentation is this particular area here in strategic goals, my apologies, is an area that we haven't yet crystallized, and I'll talk about that a little bit more further as we move through the slides, but this is an important piece to help influence the work that we do going forward. It's important to note that there's no real science to this, the terminology here, strategic goals, sometimes strategic objectives. As I move through the presentation, you'll see that I've termed them for us here as strategic directions, but that certainly is open to Board discussion if we want to drill down that far. As we worked through our presentation in January, it seemed that the Board consensus landed around the, kind of the construct that Mariposa County has used in their strategic plan. In their particular plan, you can see that the strategic directions that I refer to are actually named focus areas in their particular plan, and then under each of the focus areas, or in our case, strategic directions, then there's a plate of initiatives that are identified moving forward. I won't go through Mariposa's plan, but it was a suggestion that we build our local plan around their model, so I wanted to come back to that and just remind the Board and the public of what it looked like. And so, moving forward in our own plan, as I referred to, I've used some creative latitude in developing strategic directions that are really only my terminology. As I mentioned, there's no real art, science to what we call these particular areas. They're called different things in almost every other county plan or other private industry plans, but I've really used what we've discussed over the last almost two years, what I've heard the Board's discussion, and things that were important to the Board to line out what I think were appropriate strategic directions from our discussions. The strategic directions really will be a three-to-five-year timeframe, which is an organized way to collect a wide variety of projects under each of these different directions, and these will allow us to align the work of the various departments and identify any dependencies that we may have on particular projects. I'll talk about the potential of dependencies as we move forward, but these directions will also give us opportunity to identify discrete projects under each of them that will have timelines, that we'll be able to report out, completion and accountability for both the Board and for our public as we move forward through the completion of the plan. I won't go through every one of the strategic directions, but I want to highlight the work that we've begun doing, or I've begun doing, in collecting the types of projects that would be under each strategic direction. It's important to note that many, or at least all that I could recollect through going back and reviewing previous Board meetings, I fit many of the things that we've talked about, or I've presented to the Board as needs under different areas. In this case, we happen to be reviewing stewardship. I'll identify here that I think both Supervisors Callaway and Toffenelli identified systems integration as being important. As I was going through the plan, I thought it might be appropriate that systems integration would be a strategic direction in and of itself, but system integration may end up being a collection of several projects that seem to be more appropriate under stewardship, but we certainly can move those around. You'll see that I've collected some of the discussion that we've had under fiscal policies. We've talked about debt ratios, reserve policy, Section 125 plans before, but we don't have discrete definition on when we'll develop those plans and build them into our regular policies. We've talked quite a bit about OPEB and PERS liability, so I tried to collect that here. We mentioned the timekeeping system in the last meeting, and then this goes back to less science and more art. We may find that we have other revenue generating programs. You'll see at the bottom of the list there, it's where I caught the discussion about the cannabis program and our performance metrics, and ultimately, the revenue generation from that particular project. But as you can see, many of these projects may live in other strategic directions as we go through. I'll keep moving through them, but I'll just highlight particular projects that the Board has identified. Under infrastructure, I've talked quite a bit about the need for a facilities maintenance plan, and one of the things that we do in the facilities area is, obviously, we have regular, ongoing maintenance, but there's quite a few significant projects that I want to bring back to the Board, along with Patrick Martin, to identify a multi-year plan that will require additional expenditures above and beyond the standard facilities budget. One that I'll hit on at the end of the presentation as well is, we still don't have a home yet for what we're going to do with the ad hoc, whether or not it's going to exist in its current construct, or we want specific tasks to be identified for the ad hoc going forward. Under infrastructure, I collected jail mechanical systems, which we've already talked about, but this will be an ongoing project. Supervisor Stopper, I think, adeptly mentioned in January, the IWM cell opening and the need for that to be coming before the Board regularly. And then, a new one that is emerging that I won't talk about here specifically, but you'll see our airport as an important asset to the county is one that we need to fit in an infrastructure plan and will require quite a commitment on the Board's behalf, as many of the things under infrastructure will. So these projects illustrate the need for us to align projects over multiple years. Any one of these things, whether it's jail mechanical systems, or a cell opening, or the airport, are of the magnitude that we couldn't complete any of those, or all of those, at one time. So we'll have to have some discussion as we go forward as how we would line those out in terms of priority in the outgoing or coming years. Safety and health, this is a relatively generic area that we could collect a lot of the work that other departments do. I'll say here that one of the pieces that we don't have in what I've drafted here is this is only my collection of an outline of projects. It doesn't include yet the input of the department heads, and safety and health are areas that would require a great deal of input from many of our other departments. So I did collect things that we've talked about here, but there's other considerations that we may want to include in this area as we build out the plan. I've noted as an example below, food insecurities, job development, parks, higher education. We've talked about all of, development of all of these things. It's probably appropriately categorized under safety and health or community health, but right now, we haven't fleshed out all what the three-to-five-year program may look for many of these things. So obviously, this is a draft outline, but I wanted to mention some other areas of consideration that we may talk through at a later time. Community and external engagement is obviously something the Board has been very, for good reason, insistent upon. We don't do well as a county by ourselves without working very closely with our city, CCWD, all of the smaller partners, Parks and Recreation Boards, and all the community groups that we have that we rely on heavily. It's an area that certainly requires some strengthening. One I'd like to highlight here specifically, that I'll be bringing back a recommendation where we include our community groups and other agencies in budget development requests that we bring forward. It's aspirational, a goal of mine, to do that, but I think it's important that we recognize our community groups and our partner agencies are struggling in much the same way that we are. COVID has had a significant impact on some of our smaller partners throughout the county, and I apologize, I don't remember which Supervisor mentioned it earlier to begin the discussion. I think Supervisor Garamendi asked about CARES Act funding and what appropriate uses are, and obviously, there are different allocations that have come in, either through public health or have gone through the Board, and then certainly the allocation that the Board has acted on to place in the contingency. But this is an area where we may consider interacting with our, particularly our smaller partners, and look to see if there's opportunity to allocate CARES Act fundings to help support our smaller agencies that haven't been able to generate revenue over the course of the last year because of the COVID pandemic. And then, last but not least, I have included workforce engagement. We've talked quite a bit about classification and compensation study. I'm sure that the Supervisors have had opportunity to look at both the assessor and human resources response to the grand jury. We have made commitments in some of those responses that at least some of a classification and compensation study will be done. I know it's important to the Supervisors because we've discussed it in many meetings, but there's also a more robust collection of things that should be done in workforce engagement, and I have to admit that these are things that I've lined up as my aspirational goals. I haven't had opportunity to work with HR, or even some of our internal constituents, whether it be our CAO's advisory, or the department heads, or even, in some cases, our collective bargaining units to help inform what we may do in the plate of workforce engagement, but they are, there are obviously some important things that we need to work on in the short run for workforce engagement. And so, before I go too much further in diving into any of these projects, I'll move forward to what I hope for us to accomplish in the next steps. I know I went quickly through the Board's strategic directions and the outlines of those projects. The reason is, is that those projects and everything under each of those strategic directions really are immaterial at this point in time until the Board is comfortable with our strategic directions, and those five areas that I've outlined here as being major areas that the Board wants to focus on, and from that, I can work to develop the plate of projects underneath each of those areas, work with the department heads and align what would be timelines for completion for the types of projects that we put under each of the strategic directions. So I hope to confirm that. I would like to, hopefully, aspirationally, lock in on where we're going with the ad hoc and the role of that committee, whether it will become a Brown Act committee, or in its current construct, complete the Board's direction from previous Board meetings of the projects, what few remain under the current ad hoc, or if we're going to do something different with that, because that certainly will influence not only our projects under our strategic directions, but it will influence the CAO's goals as well moving forward. And then, last, for the Board discussion, it would be helpful for us to move from not only the strategic directions and the ad hoc into identifying the study sessions that the Board would like to see in the coming months, in addition to some of the things that we know are coming up, including mid-year budget and important items like that that will obviously take some of our time as well. So, Mr. Chair, I might pause there and give the Board opportunity to provide input and ask questions before we move into discussion about the CAO's goals. I might add to the list, or might influence the notes I'll take on my end here on what might be in my goals as we move forward through the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Alt. You know, I should have done this right before we started this item, but I would like to take a 10-minute break and then come back to it. Sorry for interrupting in the middle of the item, but. You don't have to take a poll on that. Welcome back to the February 16, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Alt just had left us off with a Board discussion on our Board priorities and strategic planning before we go into the CAO goals. So, any Board comments, please?
I'm sorry, do you want us to discuss the Board discussion items?
Yeah, yes, please.
Well, I'll start with Chair.
Yeah, you're, thank you.
If you'd like, I'll start. Since we met about this, we talked about the ad hoc last time. There was a back and forth. We didn't really get clarity on what we wanted to do. I think we ought to wrap that thing up, put a bow on it. I continue to be advocate for the ad hoc. I think it keeps moving things forward on some of these big questions we have, some of those goals, infrastructure, site plan development. We've got the animal shelter, DA's building, Health and Human Services. We've got some big-ticket items, and it's pretty clunky to do it here at this Board level. It'd be clunky to do it as a Brown Act Board meeting as well. So I would, I think we ought to move forward with it as being an ad hoc. If other people want to serve, I enjoyed my service on it. If other people want to serve, I'm happy to step aside. Doesn't have to be the same group, but I do think it added value.
Thank you, Mr. Garamendi. Well, I do, I do think we need to put a, wrap it up and put a bow on it. There's things that came up in the past as to, you know, we all found the work that you and Mr. Toffenelli did on that ad hoc committee valuable. We made some good progression on getting rid of the old jail and other infrastructure within the county. I do agree that we do need to continue moving forward with it, but there's the question that comes in, you know, an ad hoc committee is for a designated amount of time. I think that, you know, at this point, you know, there's a lot of big-ticket items that you brought up, you know, including IWM, I would add to that list, with the landfill. But the, I think this goes into a fine But the, I think this goes into a financial area also. And as Mr. Alt had brought up earlier, we are a financially constrained county. I mean, we, we have a budget and we have to stay within those confines. So we're not able to engage with everything in an expedited fashion. Therefore, you know, Mr. Alt, when he, when he brought, brought some of these things up, you know, when it comes to infrastructure, he gave timelines. And I, I'm saying those are very optimistic timelines with, with that. I think this, I, now, I agree that we should continue on with this, but I think that from my point of view, a more of a strategic financial Brown Act committee might be a better fit for us for long-term planning, because all these things fall within that. And that way we can continue this on in the future, because this isn't going to be solved within two years or three years. It's something that down the road, we're going to have to continue to work on. So from where I'm sitting, I do agree it's been beneficial, but I think we need to open it up further and, and legitimize it with a Brown Act committee, something underneath the header of strategic financial planning or something to those ends. Any other comments, board members? Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, either way, I don't, I don't care whether it's a Brown Act or it's an ad hoc. I mean, you can certainly have a Brown Act committee for the overall picture of it. And then there could be specific ad hoc committee pointed off of that, pointed towards any project that you deem at that committee that needs focus by a different section. And, and just broadly on, on the Brown Act, go over the full aspect of the whole thing and, and then move on from there. I mean, to me, it doesn't really matter and I'm like, Jack, I served time on it. I think we did very well. We got things done that hadn't been done for a long time. I think it's well needed because it focuses and when you attend the meetings, that's the focus. It's not like coming here to the board and you have a broad agenda. Sometimes, a lot of times we have, you know, 28, 30, 40 items on the agenda and that's broad. These, these tend to be just, you're focused on that and you get things done more, more easily that way, so.
With the ad hoc, could we tie those into study sessions as well? So we're not going to be able to get into the details of a lot of what Al has put on here, that their job, that staff's job, but maybe approach it from an educational standpoint as well as using, utilizing the opportunities at study session to hyper-focus what the ad hoc committee are discussing. So for example, financial planning, you know, we, you guys, the ad hoc works on it and then it brings back into a study session. So we're all kind of on the same page and understand what staff is working on and what are the pros, the cons, the challenges. Then that way we don't have to worry about tying up regular agenda board meetings with some of these items as well and kind of go parallel with some of them. And then have more robust detailed conversations on the list that he presented. But I would agree with Ben. I think a big step in deciding some of this is going to be a financial planning, financial strategic planning.
Mr. Toffenelli, you'd like to address that?
Well, yeah, I, I agree with what she's saying, but one item that just came to mind that I think needs, I would like to see specifically for one item, specifically a specific ad hoc, and that would be the jail. We have some ongoing problems or have since they've moved into that building that have never been addressed. And I think if we form just an ad hoc committee for the specifics of getting everything cleaned up on that jail, because this, this is a public building that Calaveras County residents that own property are, are paying continually right now for that piece of, that jail and the sheriff's office and, and they need to get what we pay for. And I think with, by forming an ad hoc committee specifically for that, tackling that and, and having the sheriff on board with it on that committee, we can, we can set goals and ways of getting each item that's on there that needs to be addressed, repaired and fixed. And tackling anything that we need to do going forward on some of the items that were never done correctly. We talked about it, I think several times in meetings with Patrick, but a specific ad hoc committee specifically for that to get those accomplished. We're, as was said the other day, we're heading into year seven in that facility and we've had ongoing problems that need to be addressed. So I would specifically like to have an ad hoc committee formed specifically. The other things, Brown Act or whatever, but I think specifically for the jail to get those things accomplished or get going on them and focused is, is something that really needs to be done.
I, I could agree with that also. So let, let me summarize what I'm hearing from, from a majority of the board right now is we are in favor of doing a Brown Act committee for strategic financial type of committee. And also starting a, this will be re-categorizing our ad hoc committee for another time limited towards dealing with the, the ongoing issues at the jail. So would that, would that be, do I hear any dissent to those being two items we could have bring, brought back to us for us to legitimize?
I, I, Ms. Chair, I, I think that, I think Gary is correct that we need to deal with this spot on for the jail. And Gary on this board is the most knowledgeable about this, what's going on in the jail. So I would, not as a resident, obviously, but as someone who's been working on this for many years. So I would like, I would hope he would be able to be on that ad hoc. The broader one, you know, the problem with the broad, bigger committee and the bigger question is, you know, it's, it's, it's a big question. How do we fund all these? So I kind of like the idea of, you know, having the big question, how are we going to deal with a multimillion dollar health and human services building, a multimillion dollar district attorney's building? Those are big questions, but there are other questions like what Gary's talking about for the jail, which, you know, probably we hope will be less than a million dollars to finish everything out. I think we ought to, and that's an immediate need. I think because of the grand jury's never-ending reports that we are failing at the animal shelter, we may want to take that same approach to the animal shelter instead of having it be, you know, because that's not going to be as expensive as a DA building or health and human services and it's something we have to get done. Not the same priority as life and safety as the jail, but it's still probably higher than getting a new HHS building built. So I don't know whether that could come along later. We got a clear and present need right now. Maybe we do the big committee, do this, and then we dole out little projects as the need demands.
I could, I, I could see that being included on the ad hoc committee with the jail when it comes to that. I, I think you've got very valid points, Mr. Garamendi, and I, I would also hope that Gary would like to, or Mr. Toffenelli would like to continue his service on it. It's been invaluable, along with yours, you know?
He's probably more valuable than I am, but I was happy to serve.
Absolutely. So I think we're, we're, are you okay with that, Mr. Toffenelli?
Whatever the board wants. I just brought it out there because I think it's very important. The people that serve on the ad hoc is one thing, and if you, the board wants to appoint me on it, that's fine, I'm happy with it. But just to have it focused on that is the main.
I think, I think, Ms., Ms. Callaway?
I have been somewhat concerned about doing a permanent ad hoc committee because I felt like staff is very confident to do those things, but after having listened to my colleagues who served on it, I guess I look at it a little bit differently. I support Gary's recommendation. I do not support a strategic Brown Act committee. I think that's critical, that that's a board issue and that there are pieces of that puzzle that could be done by debt advisory, treasury oversight, not just the board members. We have an opportunity during budget time or during any time to bring up something, the projects that the chair made or the supervisor Garamendi made. I do not want to see two supervisors on a strategic Brown Act committee. I think it's because they could be saying X and the board collectively could be thinking Y, that staff would come to us and they say, you know, this is really a priority. We have to start dealing with the health and human services building. And, and then maybe at that point we would ad hoc something for that specific thing like the jail. But I don't think we could have a strategic Brown Act committee without having debt advisory and treasury oversight as part of that component. And I strongly feel it is the board's decision to set those priorities. So I have come around the bend and support ad hoc. I, but I don't support the strategic Brown Act.
I, I understand the debt advisory committee's role as something different than that, but you know, that's, that's my, my perception. So we're, we're at a point, I hear one dissenting from the Brown Act committee. Can we give some clear positions to it so I know what the will of the board in its entirety is?
You want me to try?
Sure.
All right. I think an ad hoc committee consisting of two members for a 12-month period to take on the issue, solve the issue of, I'm making this up as I go, the jail and animal services building.
Is 12 months enough?
Just, well, you don't, otherwise you're going to run into it being a standing committee.
Right, okay.
So we have to have a timeline on it. And then I guess the other would be your proposal to put together a, a broader facilities plan and financing plan.
Right. Oh, because the list is extensive beyond the two, two for the ad hoc, so.
Is that close?
You're in favor of both committees, one being the ad hoc, one being the Brown Act?
Yes.
Mr. Toffenelli?
I'm in favor of that also.
Ms. Fuldorff?
I understand the concern, but I'm also in favor of that strategy. I'm going to throw a monkey wrench. Another idea to ponder is if we can't come up with specific or agree on specific goals, would it be in our interest to consider having staff bring a third party in to unwind some of these items to put us on a better track for what those priorities are based off of financial and the goals that the board has as a collective? We don't, it's just having, if we're going to dive into this, I just feel like we need to have those discussions of if we're not comfortable with having Brown Act committees, what other options do we have? Are we open to having those options to have someone tell us what we're not seeing too? I know we have grand jury reports, but there's other things that staff may not be able to get to the root of and we may need to be presented with. But overall with this discussion of pulling, yes, I would support that with the idea of other considerations if we dive into, this is going to be a big rabbit hole and we're going to be diving down and are we going to be hit with a wall that we're going to have to reconsider some of these options in the, down the line once we start unlaying this, this onion?
I think that would be the purpose of the Brown Act committee would be to bring those back to the board at that point, you know? They would come back with suggestions and then the board in its entirety would make, make, make the decision and then they would fall through with it after the board's made its decision.
Mr. Chair, who do you perceive as being on the Brown Act, strategic Brown Act committee?
I'm open to it. I, I, I'm not going to say that the board chair has to be on it.
I don't mean the supervisors. Who else makes up that committee?
I, I would, I would suggest the CAO. You know, Mr., Mr. Alt, who, could you go down a list? I, I would also include the auditor controller. You know, there, there's a few, there's a few on the list that I would go on there. I'd probably, you know, possibly Patrick Martin from facilities if it's so, if it's so needed with facilities, when it comes to facilities issues. I mean, there, there's, there's quite a bit to it. Mr. Alt, could you summarize that for us?
Well, Mr. Chair, let me start with the ad hoc on that first. So what, what I hear or I interpret the board currently saying is that we, we would write up a new item and bring back to the board for action, an ad hoc that would be a 12-month committee for review of the jail mechanical systems and related expenses and potential path forward to complete the animal services building. And in bringing that back for the board to take action on that direction, then they could appoint new members to that particular ad hoc at the time we bring that action back. Is, is, is that a appropriate summarization of the ad hoc piece?
I, 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 that's what I heard. That's what I heard, sir.
You can't tell on the screen, but I'm trying to make eye contact with counsel to make sure that we're going about. We, we have an existing ad hoc that for all intents and purposes has mostly timed out. So we'd be bringing back a new action, setting a new ad hoc with new direction from the board, this time specific. So I think my, my summary would be appropriate in the, in the legal construct. Is that safe to say, sir?
I, I believe so. I believe what I'm hearing is that it would be a new limited term, basically single purpose committee, which, which would be an appropriate ad hoc committee.
That's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go on to the Brown Act committee and Ms. Callaway's question on who we would think that would best facilitate that committee being productive and who's on it.
Well, so I, I haven't gotten that far along in my thinking on that. My own personal thinking would be that two members of the board would be for us to identify which projects, options on how we finance those to, for lack of a better term, to brainstorm what some of the options were. I was thinking in the, the, kind of the same framework that we have with the ad hoc. The debt advisory committee is a pretty robust committee. It obviously has some financial folks on it, IT, public works, and, and I don't know if that broad of committee would, if, if we were to mirror what the debt advisory committee does, their role is to review specific projects that the board's approved for debt issuance for a project. I think we're a couple of stages in front of that and it's prioritization, prioritization of the projects, for example, animal shelter and one or two or three ways that we may be able to move that project forward. In the case of the animal shelter, debt may be one option, but another may be philanthropy, community partnerships, et cetera. And so in, in using the ad hoc to identify options on how we may go forward, I think we'd be better. better if it was a smaller, more responsive group. And I don't mean that our debt advisory isn't responsive. It's just that the bigger committee, it's harder to get together more frequently. So our financial folks, you mentioned the auditor, you know, probably Krista as well. I don't know if, and I'm trying to be fair off the top of my head, I don't know if the treasurer tax collector would need to be involved on the front end. She certainly may be willing to do that. She typically is when we invite her. But I know what's important is once we determine how we're going to go forward with it, it's very important that she's intimately involved so she can look at our cash flow and whatnot. But as we're conceptualizing, I don't know if it's as critical to have it on the upfront I wish I could provide more guidance. I hadn't really thought about that. I can always bring that back in the discussion. Recommendations for committees, I can consult with the department heads and bring that back when we bring the direction back to the board for a Brown Act committee.
That could be included in the recommendations. I mean, it's, this is why we're having the discussion today. Ms. Callaway, I don't think we answered your question.
It's okay that you didn't because I don't support doing it. And I do think the treasurer should be involved.
Okay.
But, you know, doesn't matter.
Right, well, we can work that out with the recommendations when that's brought back towards, back forward to us at a later time. And at that time, if we're not happy with it as a board in its entirety, we may all decide not to go forward with it. But right now, I am definitely in favor of the ad hoc and majority seem to be in favor of the Brown Act committee also. Mr. Toffenelli, did you have one more thing to say on that?
Well, I have a question for Sarah as far as the Brown Act committee, ad hoc committee. Being the Brown Act committee, ad hoc committee, obviously there's no length of time for it. It could go for however long till the board decides to break it up. But it doesn't need to be like the ad hoc committee for the jail that we just discussed that has a length of time. It has specifics to it. This ad hoc committee could do overall facility and not have just certain projects that they're there for unless the board gives them the list of projects that they want them to deal with. Otherwise, it doesn't have to be specific like the non-Brown Act ad hoc committee. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yes, basically. So just so that we're all on the same page terminology wise, ad hoc refers to a committee that's not a Brown Act committee. It's for a finite period of time and it's sort of single purpose. If it's not an ad hoc committee, it's a standing committee. And I believe that's what you're referring to for that. And that's correct. It could be a standing, you know, facilities committee or a standing strategic planning committee or whatever you want to call it. And that would be subject to the Brown Act. It can be indefinite in terms of length of time and it doesn't need a particular finite list of projects at the outset.
It doesn't, but we could set it up and we have this discussion and it comes back to the board, brought back for us to finalize it. We could have the discussion as to saying that it reports to us quarterly and maybe every annually we go over their goals and the board can give them specifically things that they want them to do on that committee.
Sure.
Correct?
Yeah, you can, yes, you could basically structure it however you'd like in terms of reporting back or how its priorities or tasks are set.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Of course.
That's the reason I was reaching for it because it's more flexible in the long run for us and we could still address some of the same issues as your specific ad hoc committee. But I think I still am in favor of the jail ad hoc committee for one. All right, I think we're clear on that, Mr. Garamendi. That's just the beginning of the conversation. Mr. Toffenelli?
I do have a question for Mr. Alt on his safety health list that he has here. The bottom one says groundwater issues and then it has the lead agency is admin, 12 to 36 months. Can you go into a little bit more detail of what you're talking about there and what you are bringing up?
Well, I think it's important for me to, that's a good question. I didn't contextualize well what all of the list of things are that are in this. I wouldn't even call it a draft plan yet. It's just an outline and it's an opportunity for me to categorize the things or place all the things that we've talked about and have on our plate already. So there's, in many of the plans that I reviewed, there are issues around water, water rights, et cetera. We obviously are having the discussion under the Groundwater Sustainability Act or agency in our case. And right now, I'm the point on that particular issue. So that's what I was trying to characterize here. I was trying to make sure that I captured all the different things that we're working on in the draft outline. But what's really important for me to note, as I mentioned here in the C A O's goals, is that this is not a strategic plan. It would be not a good idea for me to just simply draft a strategic plan and bring it back for the board, to the board without a lot of interaction of our department heads and in some cases, our external partners. Right now, it's an outline. Even the timelines, as Supervisor Stoppa mentioned, they may be far too aggressive because we haven't done the work of identifying all the projects, being clear on what the projects are and then lining them up in a, for lack of a better term, an annual schedule that would essentially set the plate of work for each year. So and that's why I put strategic planning on as one of my goals. And the particular item that you've referred to here, I was making sure that we collected the G S A and the discussions that we've had there under one of our particular areas so that we keep it on the board to be included. I shouldn't say on the board, on a list of items as it's essentially become a priority for us because of where we're at in the development of that particular issue. I know I talked a lot, did I answer your question specifically?
Well, yeah, I just wanted a little bit more clarity of what you were and I saw the G S A on it, but I wasn't sure exactly where you were trying to go with it. So my other question is, on the same issue, on the same page, the very first one, emergency preparedness systems, and you have O E S, public works and I T. What specifically in mind were you thinking when you put that on there as far as systems? Just so I have a clarity on what you had thoughts were on that.
I was using it as a jump off from the presentation that we heard from O E S, I think that was last week, last Tuesday, that I T and public works have been, and O E S have been working on G I S system much like our mapping system for fires and evacuation routes. And I wish I could be more articulate about what it is they're working on. John mentioned it last week and I know that Stan and Robert and John have been working on it together. So it's something that's coming forward. We know that it's an item that they're working on. We have a lot of items like that that we're working on as day-to-day things that are important to highlight and make sure that we have them on our plate of work and that the board can see that there are things that we're working on. The board has essentially endorsed them once we have a plan in place. And then as we complete these things, we'll have essentially an accountability list at the end of the year where I'll be able to do a report at the end of the year of what we've completed. So I tried to collect everything that the board's talked about, what we've heard in some of our presentations, the things that I've presented the board on our current outline or a list of projects.
So just, this is similar to along the lines of the grid system that we imposed for evacuation and type in emergencies? It's just going beyond that that we have in place or put in place a few years ago?
My underst- I'm sorry, sir.
No, they're upgrading that is what you're talking about. They're upgrading that and refining that so it works a little bit better going forward.
What I understood them to speak to last week and I've had some initial conversations with John and Robert and Stan is that they're working on a similar system to our evacuation G I S application that would be for like we just experienced during the storms. We had, we had comment from public and some, I think from the board that we might have been able to use our alert system to let the public know what roads were closed, et cetera. At current time, we don't have functionality in our alert system. It's not designed for broad-based alerts to let the public know what roads are open throughout the county. But what they're working on very specifically would hit that intent and purpose. So we have one, which is an evacuation system when we initiate the alert system that directs the public to that application. In the case of winter storms, it would direct them to a similar, but different application that would let them know what roads are open and available for them to utilize to leave an area that's affected by winter storms.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm going to follow up on that. I think we're going to be bringing the groundwater issue G S A back before us soon. I think that Stanislaus County, Rock Creek and Calvers County Water District have reached out to you and we do need to make a decision as a board on which direction we need to go. Is that correct, Mr. Alt?
Yes, sir, it is. And if I were to scroll through all of the different strategic directions, they have many things that we're currently working on. So with those that we're currently working on, I put in the timeline of 12 to 36 months. Obviously, those are things that have become priorities just by virtue of the amount of work we have in them already. But that is one that not only will it be a priority in the short run, that it'll have out-year impacts on our work as well.
You have tree mortality underneath admin. O E S has been working on that in the past, I do believe, when it comes to recouping, recovery on funds.
Yes, sir. Most of the areas you'll see here are admin. O E S is under admin, I T is under admin. So I, and I probably could have been clearer by making O E S and admin and for that matter, public works as well. But I'll come back to you, this is not an all-inclusive list and it's not a fully fleshed out plan. This is illustrative of not only things that we have on our plate, but what we've talked about. So I did this to try and show what our plan as we worked through it might look like so that we could look at, for example, if we have more robust, in some of the areas where we have, I'll use a, where we have systems integration, for example, as we sit down and we work with the department heads to flesh out what all our different systems are and how we need to work through integrating those, it might cause us to realize that the plate of work that we have in the next 12 months doesn't allow us to get to that particular project. And that particular project may have to come before we do anything downstream from it that's on those lists. So what hasn't happened yet with all of these projects is coordination of a year-to-year plan so they all line up. Year one, we have a set of accountability measures or projects. Year two, we have another set of projects, year three, et cetera. That's the point to this list right now is just to catalog them and show an outline. But it'll be important that we go through the work and as part of my goals, that I work with the department heads in all the various departments to make sure that we've aligned these properly so that we don't interrupt projects or work that they already have in the works. Another thing that is noticeably missing in the current example of our strategic plan is all the other departments. There's several that already have strategic plans. We know the Sheriff's Office does, Public Works has a strategic plan, Health and Human Services has a strategic plan. Ideally, we wouldn't have departmental plans that aren't connected to the board's strategic directions and this full plate of work. Not all the departments have strategic plans, so as we go through working with the departments, as one, I would suggest is one of my goals, we work with a department so that, like every other county plan that I've reviewed, the lead agency is on everything isn't admin, that there's very specific tasks and projects that will reside in almost all of our departments that will help further the strategic directions of the board. I haven't had opportunity, for one, we haven't even defined these strategic directions. That's part of our goal today to do. Once I have them defined, then I can work with the department heads for any additional projects and timelines that would fit under each of these areas so that we have a more robust plan that represents all of our departments working towards the board's strategic directions rather than just an administrative plan. So that would be next steps in my goals if the board were to endorse me completing the strategic plan with the assistance of the department heads and some of our external partners to get it moved forward.
Mr. Toffenelli, did you have something you want to say?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. Al, on the same page, at the very bottom, it says other considerations. This is under safety and health. You have library. What are your thoughts on listing the library as a strategic direction as part of a strategic goal?
So that's a great question because this is an area that is, as you can tell by looking at the number of projects, this is not robust at all in the area of safety. So it doesn't have the input of the Sheriff's Office. Health and Human Services has a lot of programs around housing, food insecurities that go with either safety or healthy communities. We, I think we all recognize that the types of things that contribute to a healthy economy tend to be jobs and they're tied intimately to higher education, parks and libraries generally contribute to healthy communities. These could be either library expansions. For example, Nancy led us through the, and Kathy Galino worked closely on securing the facility in Angels Camp. It could be either expansion or other programs. For example, the, I forget what we've termed it now, but the, for lack of a better term, the mobile library. And so I can't speak for Nancy. I haven't included her in in development of this as I haven't included any of the other department heads. So this may be an area, frankly, is probably an area that would grow immensely once we had department head input on the, you know, safe and healthy communities, projects and the things that would help support the board's strategic direction.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ms. Fullmord.
Al, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So these strategic directions, how do they tie in from the finance side of things? So how are we going to go parallel with strategic planning, financial planning when we're making these decisions? Because we each have a different passion and what we want to see to be at the top of that list, but at the end of the day, it's going to be money that's going to drive this. So how are we going to make these decisions based on, you know, on the other end? What are your thoughts on how you're going to approach that to meet the goals that each board member has individually and collectively when we give you this feedback? And how then will it tie into department accountability? So when we come to budget, we know where money's going and we have these expectations of what, with these timelines?
Well, so I thank you for prompting the question. I can tell you've been through the strategic planning process before. So right now, it isn't tied to the finances. And that's part of our problem is that because we don't have a cogent plan that identifies one to five-year plan, oftentimes we see that the requests come through, regular requests from departments come through year in and year out. And we don't have a way of prioritizing those right now. We don't have cogent thinking around how we would front load, for example, if systems integration is going to cost us, please don't take these numbers as fact, I'm just being illustrative. If for some- If, if for some reason we needed coding and we needed to bring in outside folks to help us tie our systems together so they would talk to us, and that was a quarter of a million-dollar project, we, we can't simply say we're gonna do systems integration and ask IT to just tie all our systems together, or that's simple, we would have already done it. So that might be, and quite frankly, will be probably an expensive effort and a long-term effort. So in that case, if that's one of our priorities and we see that as important and helping streamlining the rest of our work and our processes down the road, then we build that into the budget and our budget development requests at the beginning of the year. So the board then has opportunity to see the requests that are lined up in the strategic plan, really at the board's direction because of these strategic directions, and make allocations annually based on the things that you've asked us to do to put in this plan. Right now, we can't do that because we haven't developed a fully fleshed-out plan, we haven't lined out what would happen in year one through year five, but once we're able to do that and bring that back to the board, we'll be able to stage these projects out in such a way that we'll be able to align them with the budget development process. It'll help us with the departments because part of their role would be to identify in this, in, in this construct what, what their goals would be for their projects, and they'd be highlighted in these, under each of these strategic directions. So we've, we'd have a better idea, for example, if systems integration and IT's effort is in year one, but the Sheriff's Office or HHSA or any other department has a, a large-scale system that they're gonna bring onboard, that would have to come in year two. So we're able to line up systems integration and IT's effort in year one, and then all of the other projects come beyond that, behind that, once we're free of, of systems integration. I'm way oversimplifying this, systems integration is not going to be that easy, but in any of these particular areas, we'll have opportunity to sit down and line out what needs to come first in year one so that we can be successful in the year two, three, four and five plans, and we'll be able to front-load the most important things and the things that we have dependencies on. We can't possibly do some of the things that are in this plan in year one without tying some of our systems together with an IT effort, and quite frankly, we can't do that without some contribution greater than what exists in the general plan now for, I mean, in the general fund now for IT. So to your point, the simple answer is, once we get this multi-year plan together, we'll build all of that into budget development and bring requests forward in the budget cycle so that the board is able to line up your strategic directions with the allocations that you make in any current year.
You good? Thank you, Mr. Alt. Follow-up. Your, you know, most of these, I for one, think this is like a good general outline to start, as you had brought up. I'm gonna try and reel this in so we can get, we can break down to the point of what we need to do today. You say that, that a lot of these are gonna expand more so after you sit down with the department heads and get the feedback and input that you need in the future, correct?
I would expect it, it will expand greatly. They have, frankly, they haven't had opportunity to participate in this discussion, but for the front-end of mission, vision, values, and that was a couple of years ago. So they haven't, until we have the board's strategic directions, they haven't even had opportunity to think about how they would align what they need in their departments to support the board's strategic directions.
Understood. And part of the reason we're having this today is, you know, the board came up with a lot of priorities at the beginning of the year, but we didn't necessarily prioritize them in, in a fashion that we could put them together for study sessions as we proceeded throughout the year. We're all clear that we all want a lot of stuff done, but we didn't give you, we didn't prioritize that also, right?
Yeah, that, that's a very good summary. If, if I could walk away today with what would be helpful for me from the board's direction is, do you authorize or approve of or endorse the strategic directions? If so, then I'll use the strategic directions in developing our strategic planning process as one of my goals throughout the year. And I'll bring this plan back regularly, I'll identify a way with the department heads to get input and develop the plan out and get it aligned in such a way that it's meaningful for accountability and resource allocation. So the strategic directions tie directly to my goal and strategic planning. Then from that, the study sessions and the, this year's board goals will give me direction on what to do in the current year, while I'm also then working on a multi-year plan that we'll bring back later in the year. So it bridges between, you know, our current way of doing things and having one more year of specifically annual planning, and it'll, then we'll transition later in the year into multi-year, three to five-year planning at more closer to the end of the year. And then each year, when we go through the annual planning, the board will be able to look at the three to five-year strategic plan that we have, and that'll be our opportunity to move things around into the current year. And the, the current year that we're in and the strategic plan then, for all intents and purposes, becomes the goals, the board's goals or priorities and my goals. So we'll have that to find out, for the most part, in advance, and our, our discussion will be around whether or not they're still valid, whether or not we need to move one goal from a future year in, or maybe one particular item in year three is antiquated and it's not something we wanna do once we get out that far. So we'll transition from this process of annual goals to reviewing our strategic plan on an annual basis to make sure it reflects what we wanna do in the current year. But I need a bridge between now and the strategic approach, and that bridge is having one more year of the board setting, here's our goals for the year, or, or priorities, and right now, I don't know what those are yet, other than what was developed in the last discussion, which was jail mechanical systems and review and potential modifications or expansions of the cannabis regulatory program.
Yeah, and, and that, that shows, 'cause we have tentative dates, study sessions on that, the second to last page, and I, I think working towards filling that out for the most part would, would benefit us all throughout the, for, as we move forward this year. Mr. Toffenelli, was there something you wanna say?
I do. Al, I'd like to add, you look at your, your direction number one under stewardship, I'd like to add one item to that, that you can have discussions with department heads, that you said you were gonna do when you bring this back to us. Can we add new purchasing guidelines to that? I think that's an issue that has to be addressed going forward, and, and then you can bring that up and have those discussions and bring it back when you bring this back to us. Hopefully, the rest of the board agrees with me on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Supervisor Toffenelli, thank you for that. It's a reminder that, it's a commitment that we made, actually, it was a grand jury finding several years ago before I was here. Ms. Rich has presented it a couple of times to the board. It's been a finding in our external audit as well. We were close to finalization on that before Ms. Rich resigned, so we were pretty close on the product, and the department heads did have some review on it. I wish I could give you a clear date on when we would bring it back. It was supposed to come back before the board in March, but it's still got some cleanup work we need to do on it. But you're absolutely correct, it needs to be on the list. I should have caught it myself because it is a commitment that we have. Frankly, we're beyond the commitment that we made to the grand jury at this point.
If, if I may, you know, there, no, in your strategic direction, number five, workforce engagement, something that I think we need to bring back to the board this year, a classification compensation study. There's something you brought up earlier, Mr. Alt. You know, a lot of times when we give directions to this, like with the IT systems integration thing, we don't necessarily have the staff time. If we did, we would already have it done. And when we give directions like this, we give a, we give a substantial amount of more work that takes away from somewhere else that's valuable to our county and even sometimes day-to-day work. You know, this is something I brought up when we were talking priorities at the end of last year. You know, we're pulling a lot of ways on our staff and, you know, so this falls, falls underneath human resources, which is also underneath administration for the classification compensation study. And we've heard explicitly, just with everything going on from HR in the past, that, you know, they don't have time for the extra things. So I think this coming back before us and us discussing whether we wanna do it in-house or, or if we can afford to have someone that's impartial from outside the house come in and do that compensation study, you know? I mean, it's a, it's a hard choice. A lot of times, we wanna say, we wanna save the dime, you know, and not outsource these type, type of things, but, you know, we end up losing in the end because we take away from other work within the county. And I think that, I, I think it would be best served to, personally, I think this would be best served to outsource it. You know, that way, you know, it's an impartial outside entity that, that could be doing this type of classification thing, 'cause we have it top to bottom with issues that keep getting brought up. I mean, in the past, even our elected officials have come forward with, you know, they, they aren't paid what other counties are paid, and it goes from top to bottom here in Calaveras County. Some are closer, but we need to be competitive. I think this is an issue with turnover in our county. You know, it, it's been said before, I'm gonna repeat what someone else said, is you can pay someone good and treat them bad, and they may wanna keep the job. You can pay someone not so well and treat them bad, they might wanna keep the job, but you can't not pay them well and not treat them well in certain areas, not that this is happening across the county, but, and we're gonna have a high turnover rate. And, you know, generally, you know, some of my understanding, in certain areas within the county, not all, the morale's not high. And we need to be cognizant of that as we move forward. I think it's important for us to value our employees, and I think this is the first step towards addressing that. So I think this should be brought before us with a study session and us to be able to possibly give direction on how we wanna move forward in the future. I think it's a priority of ours. Mr. Garamini?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with you. I think we ought to bring this forward sooner than later. We have, and I think we ought to go top to bottom. I think we ought to include the board's supervisors and all elected officials, and I think we should do it before we start heading into election season. And so the sooner we get this through and allow people to line up what their future might be, we have several pending retirements, as I understand, so let's just take care of this. It's probably been on the plate for a decade, maybe not as long as the jail, but let's, let's talk this one out and get this off the plate.
I agree.
And I, and I also like the, and while we're doing that, let's have the department consolidation conversation, if this is on here, because that will, it all ties together.
It does, it does.
So I say, I say, let's just get on with it.
Ms. Ms. Coway, do you agree with that? Mr. Toffenelli? He's taking his mask off, he's got something.
Well, yeah, I do. As far as the classification and compensation studies, we just, COG went through one, we have four employees over there, and it took, it took almost a year for that to be completed. I'm looking at the timeline here, and we have close to 600, 550 or whatever it is employees here, so it's gonna take a considerable amount of time to get this accomplished, outsourcing it, and we outsourced there. So I, I think what we need to do, if we're gonna go down this road, and I'm not opposed to it, is we need to look at, at least get a quote from a couple of different sources on what the timeline and what the cost would be to go down that, and then have Al bring it back to us, and then we can have that discussion and say yea or nay or whatever we wanna do, but I'm certainly open to this. I think it's long needed and it's something that we hear all the time about. So even the consolidation, I'm open to consolidating and looking at that, although there was a history at one time when there was some consolidation that was, Rita remembers.
Planting a building?
Yeah, it kinda went backwards on us, so. But we're new times, different people, different things going on, something to consider, and at least we can have that discussion, and it's all brought back to us. But I really think that we need, if we're going down the classification compensation study, and I'm, I'm fine with outsourcing it, but we need to get some timeframe and some quotes on what the cost is to us for it.
I would agree 100% with Mr. Toffenelli. Ms. Fulendorf? Yes? Al?
Mr. Chair, if I could have one quick thing. You know, I did mention the electeds, and I do wanna do that. I was critical last time this came before our board, I was very critical because it was just after the last election, so that's why I'd like to get this done so that it's not the same situation. People will know what they're walking into, and we can be prepared. So I, it gives me a chance to back off my earlier statements because of timing, so.
Okay. Yeah, I hear ya. So, Mr. Alt, we're, we're talking classification and compensation study, including electeds, bring back a timeline with possible costs from, from a few different outside entities, and also, what was the other thing we added to, to it? The consolidation, consolidation. Do you get that?
Yes, sir. I, I think what we're talking about now is that that would be, those would invariably then become priorities for the coming year, and either we would do those as information items or would we be looking at fitting them in, say, in a Q2 study session and presentation? I would suggest that class and comp is a robust enough conversation that it's not just a matter of, of looking at price of an outside entity, but also the board setting their own principles on how, what the board's principles are gonna be to compensation that gets laid across to all groups, whether it's from the board, the CAO, to SEIU, to our other electeds, that those principles need to matter, and any consultant will ask that the board set their principles in advance of us doing the study so that a study can be done, and be mindful of the board's beliefs on how we're gonna compensate people. So it's probably a study session item, at, at least it's an information item. So I'm looking at our schedule here, quarter one obviously is pretty full already. I've, I've, my apologies for how this lines out, it looked better if I didn't do it month to month, but priorities were January, strategic plan we're talking about now, March would be potentially discussions about the assessment role, we haven't talked about that yet, that's another goal of mine, I wanna talk about, and redistricting. And then, then in April, we may be looking at a study session for IWM or potentially comp and class, if that's the wishes of the board.
I, I think, I think comp and class may fall better before IWM personally. I, we, I mean, we could reach out to Mr. Feriani and find out where he's at, but he's going through a lot of work right now. I think that's gonna run well into April. So I, you know, Mr. Toffenelli, would you wanna say something? I, I would go ahead and put the comp and class up ahead of IWM, just because of the timeline and what Mr. Toffenelli had already brought up on our time constriction, I mean, and I think that, that gives you a lot of work to do by April. I know, you know, putting out for bids and finding out timelines and everything else. I think we wanna still have the consolidation conversation in with that at the same time, 'cause that, that, that could fall in line with some of the compensation issues, so. Are we, I think everyone's in agreement, I, I see heads shaking yes, so I'm gonna say that- Are we, I think everyone's in agreement. I see heads shaking yes, so I'm going to say that that would be our April slot, right there, Mr. CAO.
Got it.
Okay. The CAO budget you have in basically the June slot, we're going to be talking about that in June regardless. Won't necessarily be our study session. That's regular business.
The, Mr. Chair, you're absolutely right. We typically don't do that in a study session. What I wanted to try to be mindful of as we think about what we would do for study sessions is that when, when we have a big lift, like is coming up in mid-year and/or CAO recommended budget, that we're careful about what we overlay with that at the same time. Budget for the month of June is, pretty much takes most of, if not all of admin staff off the board. So this could be a place where we look at another particular topic that doesn't take our attention away from budget development. Doesn't necessarily mean we can't get it done. It just means that there's a couple of places where it's logical to fit in. You know, other departments, whether it was, just being illustrative, illustrative, this could be an area where we do study session for general plan implementation, as an example. I'm not suggesting that's the right fit, but we may have other departments that have study sessions that we can fit in around the really heavy lifts that we have and the cycles that we have in the admin office.
I understand. Okay. So who else would like to help build this list? Mr. Toffenelli?
On your direction number five of the workforce engagement, down midway down, you have streamlined hiring process. We've had some discussion on that. Your thoughts on bringing that back as a study session? Is that what you have on the list here? Al, what exactly did you have in mind listed?
That's an item that's come up a few times. Judy's mentioned it. It's primarily around the NeoGov implementation and, you know, I don't want to speak for Judy. I think she's on the call, but we've got, we have significant portions of NeoGov implemented, but we don't have it entirely implemented, so we're continuing through that. It also overlaps quite heavily with IT and their goals. So that's what I was thinking there is, in some ways, it's systems. And that really is NeoGov implementation. That's why I've front-loaded it in the short run.
Okay.
I have a follow-up. I have a follow-up to Gary. So not only would that answer going down the succession planning, should that tie in to consolidation and class and comp? Because in the next couple of years, there's going to be mass exits of retirement with baby boomers. And I feel that that's going to be part of a recruitment problem of filling in gaps. We're already seeing it right now with three department heads, what it looks like with three critical department heads missing. Should that somehow tie in with that study session on the other two items?
You're absolutely right. We're at a point where we're, well, let's just say, data and other industries suggest that we're going to see a significant exodus of employees, just in terms of quote-unquote aging out. What I would be concerned without talking with Judy about, and as I mentioned on all of these lists, none of these timelines were determined by Judy in this case. And even this list of things are just things over time she and I have talked about aspiring to. Ultimately, when we get them all on the plan, the board should be making decisions on position allocation and things like that, on knowing when, when we could anticipate our turnover. We could probably talk about it in April, but I don't know how good our data is currently on the age of our employees and where we would be on a report that might help inform our decision-making right now. I would suggest that class and comp is front-loaded before that because ultimately that will help us, help in some of our employees know whether they want to stay longer or if they'll go ahead and retire. And it'll help us understand where we're going to be in terms of our ability to recruit and fill open positions once we do class and compensation. I think it'll help inform succession planning ultimately. I just don't think we could talk articulately about it in two months. And again, Judy's on the call, but she may be able to.
Yeah, if I can, if I can interject in here just a little bit. A part of class and comp studies, a lot of time is looking at our job descriptions and what, is there a career ladder within the departments? And so that will be a, something that we definitely look at when we do the class and comp study. And then when we come back with suggestions, is making sure that we have those career ladders within the departments. And the career ladders create the succession plan. So I think truly, the succession planning, we do have to get the class and comp study done first, clean up our job descriptions, create those career ladders, and then the succession planning will come.
And then I have another question. On community and external engagement. Going, so currently since we're in a pandemic and economic recovery, it's going to be something we're going to have to probably talk about in the next year or two of how that's going to, what that's going to look like for a community? What is that investment that we're willing to put back into the economy? Can that be a line that's added in there at all? And it goes into the discussion of possible CARES money? What are we looking at and what are we going to be? I know we're doing great in certain numbers, but do we really want to depend on that, those numbers when the housing market fund pops, if it does? You know, there's other considerations that I'm a little bit concerned about what our economy is going to look like in the next two to three years. And do we want to have that discussion of what we're willing as a board to invest back into our community? And organizations, as people are coming back or are they going to be able to have the jobs to invest in their kids going back to sports? There's a lot of things that are going to be integrated. And I know Al touched on it on healthy, safe and healthy and other considerations, but I feel like it borderline both of these items. What are your thoughts, Al?
You bring up a good point. I think there's two concepts. One is the long-term recovery and community sustainability, where we certainly could add it in. I think it's a great suggestion. I could add another line here. Probably really similar to the work that Kathy's been doing with, with the Chamber and CVB, et cetera, under this particular item. And then more specific in the long run, having tasks under, you know, that notion of community resiliency as a strategic piece. But in the short run, I think we also need to answer the question that you bring up in terms of the CARES Act funding that we do have and may get in the next six months. And the, I think in the short run, to answer that question, you'll have a presentation on the mid-year budget next week. And the board will have at least a point in time snapshot of where we, where we stand in our contingencies, reserves, and all of our expenditures. And so we can include the discussion there as well as to how the board feels about our current fiscal standing and whether or not there's capacity to allocate some of the CARES Act funding, whether it be to businesses in our community or our community partners that have county facilities, as an example. There's many different ways to cut the funds and everybody needs money. We have certainly an extensive list of requests, but I think the most immediate question should come up in the mid-year budget review next week.
Thank you.
And I will add in the line, a line in here in community resiliency, something to that effect. Does that, does that touch on what you're referring to?
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, back to the study sessions. We got through April. May, may I make a suggestion that we do the, make a decision on the GSA situation? That's coming up. I mean, we need to decide which way we, as a board, want to work with our partners in Stanislaus, Rock Creek, and Calaveras County Water District. And also, I think with that type of conversation, we could stack more than one thing on for that study session and also put the IWM cell on it at the same time for May. Are we okay with that? Mr. Toffenelli's a yes. Mr. Garamindie, yes. Fulendorf, yes. Callaway? Yes. And then? Oh, Ms. Callaway, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm used to it. Here's a short one. I don't know, do we still have a water enhancement fee?
We do. We do have water enhancement funds.
No, well, it's not the funds, it's.
The ongoing fee.
We still doing that. I mean, I just, there was lots of discussion. It's more of a short one. Doesn't have to be long as complex as the ones that we've been discussing. I just felt like we should take a look at it and see if we still need it or if there's other things we should be doing with it. And then you had on strategic directions, one and two. You discussed fleet, which you have at 48 and 60 months out. Every year at budget, we get fleet requests. Is that maybe something we should be talking about sooner rather than 48 to 60 months out?
Supervisor Callaway, do you mean the fleet here? I'm sorry, I was taking notes at the same time. This is, I think, the one that you were referring to, fleet vehicle inventory purchase.
Right, right. Every year at budget, we get requests for fleet and you have it on strategic direction one and two. So I didn't know if that's something we should consider or look at prior, because we deal with it every year at budget.
Well, that shows you how important I think that it is. If I was duplicative, my apologies for having it in two places.
No, that's, it's not being duplicative. It's just that it's down the road. And at budget time, we look at this department wants this car, this department wants to replace that car. I mean, I think it's appropriate.
And I appreciate, appreciate you bringing that up. Obviously, I do think it's important that we address it. I think in, in the grand scheme of things, we have a lot of other really important foundational pieces to get in place before we get to that. I don't mean to minimize it, but I think if, if the supervisors understood the gravity of the vehicle inventory we have, it probably would, might give you cause for concern when you're approving the requests. That said, I don't think it's, and the reason why I put it out in year three, four, or five, and, you know, four or five in this case, is that I think we need to do a lot of other really important foundational work ahead of that to be able to address that issue. I saw it as not nearly as important as some of these really important things that are on the list before it. But I do appreciate you bringing it up and if the board wanted it sooner, I certainly would move it around in the list of projects. But quite frankly, it will change our expenditures over time, to be thoughtful about it. But it's not, the ramifications of doing it sooner rather than later aren't as big as some of these other things that we have on our plate that need to be done.
I understand what you're saying. I just thought it would give us direction at budget time when each of the departments request vehicles and fleet and we're replacing fleet or adding to fleet. So we'll just do it the way we've always done it. Thank you.
Al, on that, could that be something at budget, where we reference back to the strategic plan on how those requests would be meeting the goals and objectives of what's in front of us? Because we could approach it that way, right, when those requests come up?
Ultimately, the way I see the strategic directions and budget development process working, once, once we get through, and I have to editorialize a bit. We've never had strategic directions before. This is the piece that was the gap. So I have to have them first to be able to put them in budget development. But the direct answer to your question is, yes, they absolutely should influence the requests that the department heads are putting forward. But they're in the process of doing their mid-year and their budget request for this year and really haven't had time to digest at all the five strategic directions. So one of my out-year goals would be to build in the budget development process, each of these strategic directions, and some rationalization about how a budget request would support these. But unfortunately, I'm still back in the same place that I answered Supervisor Callaway's question is that I don't think we're there yet in some of the other foundational pieces to, as much as I don't like going forward the way we've always done it. All of these things are lists of things that are the Calaveras way of doing things that we're trying to unwind. And, and we can, in my view, only unwind specific pieces in manageable, manageable chunks. And, and the, while the vehicle inventory and purchase, I think, is problematic, I wouldn't suggest that we touch that until later on in the process. We certainly could ask questions in the budget development process. What vehicle is replacing? What's, you know, what's the need for a new vehicle? The department heads are all quite adept at being able to answer those questions. What the board can't see right now, we don't have a system for being able to. I realize the auditor's office has a vehicle inventory, but it doesn't necessarily, for one, we're finding out that it isn't entirely accurate. We're working through that now and it's not the auditor's issue. It's, as we're surplus-ing some vehicles, where we found that there's some errors in it. It doesn't necessarily have all the mileage of all the vehicles, et cetera. So we're not ready yet to be able to say, here's a way of doing it so that we might take on, for example, county-wide fleet leasing program like Public Works just got adopted. Or the potential of, for lack of a better term, being able to hand vehicles down from one purpose to the next. We do that already to some extent, but we don't have a thoughtful way of seeing, you know, once, once a vehicle's hit its useful life in the sheriff's department, it might not be appropriate for a CUD3 vehicle any longer, but it could quite possibly still be viable for a vehicle on HHSA. Now, I'm being completely illustrative. I know all the people on HHSA are jumping up and down saying they don't want to use sheriff vehicles. But we have to have a philosophy on those things before we can decide how we're going to move forward. We just don't yet have it yet. And I don't think we'd be prepared to have that by budget development because we have so many other priorities lined up in front of that particular item. Of course, that's the board's prerogative and if the board were to say, that's a big enough deal, we want to see it, then I'll front-load that and that'll be something we do in the next 12 months in advance of some of the other priorities that we have listed out early on.
Ms. Fulendorf?
So hypothetically, you know, if we were going through the next budget cycle, would the board's expectation for these strategic directions require department head to show where in the strategic plan it meets the goals for the overall county? So let's play, so mid-year exercise for next year. So let's play, so mid-year exercise for next year. Individuals want X, Y, and Z out of this department, and yet we have a county goal to meet system integration, and rather than coming out of maybe that particular department, it fits into strategic direction number one, and then as a board, we would make that decision for the county rather than narrowing in each, piecemealing each department to meet the goals here, like a checkmark?
Ultimately, that's how I see our budget development process going. I don't see it that being the case by, by June, CAO recommended, or, or the board taking action in July, only because we've, we've only got a couple of months left before we do that.
Next year. I hope it's.
Yeah, next year would be more likely to tie all this together. Of course, that's dependent upon the board endorsing these as strategic directions and me being able to work through, you know, the course of the year to be able to get a more set plan. Again, this is an outline. It's meant to inform the discussion, not necessarily be interpreted as a plan. But you've, you've touched on where I would ultimately like us to go. If the board says, these are our strategic directions, and we expect that department requests conform with our strategic directions, then we could ask the department heads to write their request as such.
Thank you.
And of course, we're talking just general fund departments because a lot of those vehicles are, are not purchased with general fund dollars in some departments that aren't funded by general fund. Correct?
That, that is correct. I would submit, though, that those departments that are not necessarily general fund supported should still have, whether they're general fund-supported or not, they're under the direction of the board and the board's philosophies and the way the board expects us to go about doing our business. So whether or not it's state funds, I would suggest that a department that is state-funded shouldn't necessarily be less interested in stewardship. Those dollars really come to us for programs as opposed to, well, we're not sure what to spend it on, let's, let's spend it on a car, as an example. I'm not suggesting our departments do that, but if we're consistent in our approach, then we can help avoid kind of the restricted fund jealousy that can go on. We always look to the programs that have more state funding and go, oh, great, they get to do that in that particular program. And I always argue that no department, regardless how they're funded, is on its island, on an island unto itself. All of their paychecks have a county logo on it. They're compelled to follow the, the board's strategic directions, the county policies, employment contracts. And I think it sets the standard if we have a philosophy on common class, as an example. That will lay across all the departments. So I would argue that vehicle criteria, use, and purchasing philosophy from the board would apply uniformly in the same way that some of the other things that we're talking about.
To, to an extent. There, there could be funding for some of these state or federally-funded departments that mandates that they buy a vehicle with some of the money that they're being given.
That's true.
So that would outlie anything that we would have control over. If they, if the state dictates that you must buy 10 new vehicles by this date with this funding that we're giving you, then they, they have to do that in order to keep that money and use it. So I, I hear what you're saying, but that's not completely overall. But, but we could do something along the lines of what we're speaking here, even though they're not generally funded dollars in some of those departments. If it's not mandated or there's a grant that's applied for specifically for vehicles or transportation, it kind of outplays what we're talking about here in some ways.
Um, we're at a point right now, it's 10 minutes after, or seven minutes after 12, if that clocks right. Yes. We're going to take lunch and come back at 1:30. When you're ready, I'm ready.
We are, and we're ready.
Welcome back to the January, or I mean, February 16th, 2021 Board Supervisor Special Meeting. We're still currently receiving information from staff to provide directions to staff on priorities and, and study sessions for 2021. I would like to attempt to reel this in again. These five, so this is a general outline for, for a strategic plan that's been given to us. These five segments that, you know, Mr. Toffenelli asked last time that we bring it back in the form that Mariposa had it. So this is a basic outline of, of what categories our strategic plan could have. I mean, right now, if anybody has any ideas of possibly adding a sixth category or, you know, condensing to categories because a lot of this stuff does crossover. But when, when it comes to this, we need to make a decision on, do we like this outline? Which outline, I mean, which things do we want? Which things do we not want on, on these headers? And then, once we give that direction, the CAO can meet with the respective department heads, start getting their input, and then, and then elaborate on the real nuts and bolts of what goes into, goes into this. Because this is just a basic outline based on things that have come up before. Does that help anybody? You know, I, I personally am okay with the five categories. And, you know, I don't really think we could, we could change the name of one of them, you know, to be more inclusive, like the education, the health and safety aspect. I mean, there's different names we could bring forward from different areas, but I think this basically captures the concept of what we need for base work to move forward. Any comments by the board? So with that, I'll take that we're okay with these five categories in concept, in concept? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. So we can give direction to go ahead and move forward to it, and then once that, you know, the input from the other departments at a later date, he can bring this back forward to us. Mr. CAO, alt. Is that, is that good for you for right now when it comes to the strategic plan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that, that is sufficient. I'll include it in one of my goals along with bringing back the ad hoc and clear direction on that. But as far as the strategic, strategic plan, it pretty much puts this piece to bed.
Yeah, until, until a future date. So we also have, you know, do we have enough there to continue through study sessions toward, to the middle of the year? Because I think at that point, you know, we can bring back in June and just see how we want to structure out the rest, the rest of the year moving forward. So is that good enough? Do you have enough there now? And then also, talking to you earlier, we may need to bring back the GSA thing earlier than later, just because that's coming to a head right now.
So in, in order of the study sessions, we do have them, we would have them scheduled out now through the first half of the year, and I think it's prudent for us to discuss, at least get through some of the study sessions. They may be informed by other issues that come up, so we'll be able to schedule out the second half of the year in a month or two. So I think we're good to go there. And then on the groundwater sustainability, I do think we'll have to bring that item back. I had on kind of the rough drawing board bringing back an item for the board to discuss on the March 9th meeting, and it would just be an information item or potentially an action item for direction from the board on that particular item. So I, I think we'd have to pull it off the, the study session agenda.
Okay. If there's no other comments by the board, I'm going to have to get, put this out for public comment. Okay, Ms. Clerk.
I do not see any public comment at this time.
We'll give it a moment. I think we're getting a lot of public comment recently. With that, I think we'll put this item to rest unless any other comments by the board members. Okay.
Thank you.
So then we'll move to item number five, discussion and direction to staff regarding possible resolution advocating for greater local flexibility and autonomy in responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. I personally brought this to the board, you know, for, for discussion to see if you had the appetite for it. You know, there's, it's consistently brought up, you know, by public health and other entities that, you know, the state's constantly switching gears and directions, you know, in response to COVID, which makes it hard for us as policymakers to move forward and everything. I mean, you know, I, I personally don't see this as much as a political issue as some other people do, but I, I think it's more, you know, to, to the point of be able to respond in a way that's best for Calaveras County. I did bring up, you know, the healthy communities resolution just to read here, and it's not anything that anybody has to agree with or, you know, or is what I have in mind to be set in stone, but I just want to read it to you. Because I, you know, beyond the people that originally put this forward, I think it's pretty straightforward to the point. Whereas the paramount concern of policymakers at all levels, the health and well-being of our constituents, never more so than during what has been called a once-in-a-century pandemic. And whereas decisions affecting the health and well-being of our constituents must be based on empirical evidence without regard to politics or the influence of special interest groups. And whereas California has struggled as much as any state during the COVID-19 pandemic, with the third highest unemployment rate in the country, the largest backlog of unpaid jobless claims, and the fifth worst excess death rate west of the Mississippi, and whereas California's blueprint for a safer economy provides a one-size-fits-all approach to reopening communities that fails to allow the flexibility to respond in a data-driven way to what is occurring in our county. And whereas the blueprint largely impacts the operation of businesses and schools without any showing that those environments are responsible for COVID-19 cases observed in our county. And whereas our county has seen increases in drug abuse, delayed medical care, depression among our youth, and their overall need for mental health services. Scroll down here. And whereas our county is extremely concerned about the impacts to our children of any further delays to in-person education, now therefore be it resolved by the board supervisors that these facts demonstrate a need for collective and unified action from our county and surrounding communities, and it be further resolved that county approve this resolution with a commitment to the following principles. That our county is best served by an ability to respond locally to COVID-19 virus in accordance with our local data and circumstances as specified, for instance, in the test station filed with the California Department of Public Health, that our county is geographically diverse and ill-suited for the countywide restrictions imposed by the blueprint, and the state should enable our COVID-19 response to be tailored to geographically separate areas, such as different zip codes, as circumstances and case levels warrant. That school districts in our jurisdiction are urged to safely open all schools as soon as possible and provide in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible without further delay. Our county requests an extension of time beyond December 31st to encumber and spend our federal cares funds, to which we are entitled by law, consistent with our respective local plans and programs. Now, this is just an example of what a resolution can look like, but I, I thought I would bring this forward and see if the board has appetite for this and, and your thoughts. Ms. Callaway.
I don't know who the healthy communities are. I don't know who they are. Who are they? I mean, you said it's not political. I mean, we have an office of education. We have schools that are open. We've left it up to the local school district in cooperation with our public health officer, and the educators are being tested. And if you go by zip code, that meant where most of them are in the west end of the county wouldn't be open. And then who are we medically to say, oh, yeah, well, you know, Arnold, I'll just take mine, doesn't have many cases, so they can be open, but Murphy's does, so they can't be open. I'm not comfortable doing this. I heard Mr. Leach today encouraging people to get tested. It really is, it's happening. He thinks, you know, in a couple of weeks, we might be in a position to go back into red. And I don't want to be, as a board, we've done nothing. And all of you know how I feel about that. We had a ordinance before us, and we were going to educate people. We didn't pass that. So unless we want to assume responsibility, I can't support this. And then you have different rules and different zip codes or different rules for the county of Calambaris versus what the state is. And either we're in it together as a county, or we're not, and I think we should be in it together as a county. I encourage people to be, get tested because it helps the west end of the county as well as the north-southeast end of the county. And I don't have an appetite to answer your question for this.
Understood. Any other input? You don't think that's it?
I don't know. I, I mean, I'm as frustrated as everybody else with the state. I mean, I wake up every morning and read the paper, and it drives me nuts, just like everybody else here. Schools got to get opened again. We have to move forward. But, you know, much like, you know, our, our last letter we sent, you know, the day we send it is the day where it's out of date.
That's the hard truth.
Things are, things are changing so fast that by the time this letter gets approved by this board, God knows what's going to happen. I mean, CDC guidelines are different now than the blueprint guidelines. So I, I don't know. And I, I'm frustrated with this. I'm not against it. I'm not against it by any means. I don't know if I'm for it. I just, I just don't know if I really know what it's, if anybody really cares what we have to say. I mean, we have to say for our people, that's important. But, boy, I tell you, it's just such a moving target. It's tough.
Yeah.
So how's that? I'll take the middle road, saying, I don't know. Where he doesn't know, I'm, I don't know. And since Gary threw it at me, I'll throw it back at Gary.
Well, until Gary puts his red light on. All the rural counties and rural communities and our more urban counties are all saying the same thing, and the frustration is there. And we're not alone. And unless we want to assume some responsibility, which I don't think we're there, I agree with Supervisor Guerra Mendy, it's a moving target. Let's do what we can to help the residents and the businesses, businesses of our community. And if we want to write a letter to advocate for flexibility, I'd be supportive of something like that. But, you know, what does that mean? I think RCRC is already doing something like that or encouraging that, CSAC is. But if we as a county want to write a letter, I don't want, I'm not interested in doing a resolution to advocate for flexibility, and what does that mean? What does that look like? Can we give examples? I'd support something like that in keeping with all the other more, maybe more rural communities in the state.
Mr. Toffenelli? Ms. Polendor?
I don't know if everybody gets pointed at me. You know, I read this thing, and I saw the letter that came attached to it, and I understand where it's coming from, and I understand the frustrations, and the question, if we pass a resolution similar to this or something, we decide, okay, Marita says write a letter, she'd support it, or we pass a resolution, we pass a resolution, what are we gonna do with it? Are you gonna send it to Newsom? I mean, we pass this resolution, and the other consideration I have for it, because it's saying declare our independence from the state of California, are we going to cut our own throats when it comes to any funding that could be coming down through the state or lessening the number of vaccinations that we get, vaccine we get? Are we, I mean, those are some of the things that consider. I understand what it says, and I don't disagree with a lot of what it says. But to take something as what this says itself, with just passing what this says, I can't wholeheartedly stand behind everything it says because we are part of the state of California, whether we agree to it or not here, or the people, our constituents, agree to it or not, because of what's happening in this day and age and with this pandemic, either way, we are still part of the state of California, we're a subsidiary of it. And we have to go by what the state dictates in whether we agree with it or not, whether we feel that it doesn't fit our needs, and I'm in total agreement of that. I don't, I think the rural counties aren't Los Angeles or San Francisco, we're not even part of the valley. What ties us to the valley, from my understanding, has to do with where our patients go and where those patients go as far as counting beds, ICU beds and beds in the hospital. We send to the valley Stockton and Stanislas County, that's Mountain Valley EMS, transports them, ALA transports them to those areas. So we are tied there, and we're tied to what they are. It's kind of loosened a little bit with now going into the different tiers, and we're still the higher tier. But all in all, we are still a subsidiary of the state of California. To pass a resolution specifically like the verbiage that this says, I, again, I, if we're interested in writing a letter like Marita says, or drastically changing some of the verbiage in this thing before we pass it, I'd be interested in doing that. But this pretty much is saying we're cutting all ties with the state of California, and it's not something I would advise to do.
If I may, I did read a slightly different version than what you have in front of you. There's ten counties that have brought them forward, I chose one that did not have that verbiage in it. And I do agree with you that, you know, just because we say so doesn't mean we're not part of the state. And I definitely took a approach, one of the approach of resolutions that another county had had that wasn't as strong as that by any means, for that very reason, because I wasn't wanting to go to those political extremes by any means. So I do agree with you on that. It's more so the one I read is making a statement. You know, and we've talked about writing letters before, and it's honestly, it's, where's our letter go? Does it get read? I don't know.
Well, the resolution that you read was not attached to, and I tried to follow it as you were reading, from what you were reading, some of the verbiage is the same as what was in this letter here, but it wasn't attached to our agenda. So preview of anything, it would have been nice if we had what you were proposing attached to this agenda item, so a couple of days of looking at it and making our own decision and copying, you know, writing down what our ideas were on it would have helped. Sit here and make a decision on it right now without seeing it in writing form. So, I mean, if you're willing to at least send a copy of that to all of us, or have the clerks send a copy to all of us, and maybe at a future date bring this back, if we have time to look at what you have wrote or what you put in proposing, and we have a chance to go through it and look at it, maybe put our ideas on it and so forth, and then have a discussion. This agenda item doesn't have anything attached to it, so I had no idea what you were speaking on it.
Right, okay. Yeah, no, that's, and that's what it was meant for, discussion, not action. And I can definitely afford that to each and every one of you, and then at some point we could re-agendize this if we so choose we want to. That's, that's part of the discussion we're having here, you know, was to find out if there's appetite for anything to that, to those ends. Ms. Polendor, did you have anything?
I agree, but I think it's a wrong format to go. I would, if we wanted to make more action, and I understand you send letters and they get lost, but I think more of an advocating role or lobbying role might make better sense because I feel once we pass a resolution, we're gonna have to hold ourselves to this. And what are we gonna be holding ourselves to? What does that mean? What are we talking about? And I wasn't on the board last year when those decisions were made, but to Marita's point, there's not much happening. So how are we going to tie ourselves to this resolution if not much has happened from the board? And by that, I mean, holding individuals accountable, holding, I mean, what? We all get, we all agree, we should not be put into the same box that San Francisco, Stockton, every other urban area and major city should be, we agree on that, but what do?
So that's where the discussion goes in? Why are we holding people accountable to things that are, you know, that we don't agree with because we aren't San Francisco, San Joaquin County, and so on? So that's very much so the point, I agree. You know, and how do you hold something accountable? That some, somebody accountable for things that we don't necessarily agree with, you know? You say we don't do anything, but we didn't bring what was brought before us last year wasn't just an education piece, it was like going out and finding people.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, okay.
It was not finding people because I'm the one that had to make the motion. Because you all didn't make the motion, and it was what you wanted. I wanted some kind of enforcement. You agree that on three to two, that we didn't want to do that, we want to do education. So we wrote, staff spent time, wrote an ordinance, came to the board, I asked for a motion, the three never made the motion. Mr. Guerra Mendy said, Marita, would you like to make the motion? So here I am, making a motion on something I didn't support because at least it was something. And we've done nothing as a board, but have our picture taken on the steps with our masks on saying, wash your, wash your hands, wear your mask. So all that aside, because I remember that one very clearly, we haven't done anything. And what about Tuolumne County? Tuolumne is much worse than we are, so we can't just sort of generically say all rural counties. Because some rural counties are in a lot of trouble, and they're not, they're not urban, they're rural like we are, but they've had a huge case rate, a huge ICU rate. Even Amador's, we're doing much better than Amador's and much, of course, much better than Tuolumne. So again, to get back to if they really want to do something, if we want to write a letter saying we would like, we would like to advocate for more flexibility, and what does that mean? Do we then take ownership so we can say our restaurants can now serve indoors because we don't have cases, well, that are attributed to our restaurants? I can't say that, I don't know that. I don't know where our cases are attributed to. I mean, if it's something like what happened at Avalon, that's different, but our contact tracings aren't saying, well, yeah, they happened at this restaurant or that restaurant. I mean, they're not saying that, and we can't say that. If our medical people can't say it, I don't know how we can. It's only if we say we want to advocate for more flexibility generically, that's fine. That's flapping our wings and doing something because we probably all agree to that, but so it wasn't that we were gonna find people, there was no support for any of that, any kind of enforcement like that. We wanted to do an education system, and there was no support for that either. I gotta take a deep breath and meditate, maybe go a little trees.
Respectfully, I remember it very much differently, but with that, Mr. Guerra Mendy.
Really, you just cracked me up. You know, maybe we, maybe we need to pivot the conversation. I mean, Sam said the fastest way for us to get off, to get, to get off the list and get active again is to decrease, get out of purple tier, right? And hopefully get down. Seemed like the easiest way to do that was to change our positivity rate, so maybe we should write a letter to our community and say, we're not having people die, thank God, lucky today, but if we want to get out of this, everybody needs to go get tested, healthy people need to get tested, people who are healthy like you and I need to go get tested, so we drive down that rate. And that may be a lot faster than lobbying the government, just to get in a better rate than we get all those things that Marita was talking about.
This is the thing I constantly wrap my head around, because now you're asking people that feel good to go get tested for something that doesn't make you feel good, you know? Generally, I don't go to the doctor if I'm not sick, right? And I get your point, I mean, your point's valid, Mr. Guerra Mendy, you know, but that's the way the state put, put this forward in this blueprint.
I know.
And this is why, this is very much why I want to have this conversation.
I mean, I got, I got tested genuine the other day, and it took, I think I was, from pulling in the parking lot to pulling out was less than ten minutes. It was just really easy. I know, well, I was visiting with everybody there too, so, you know, seeing how everybody in District Five was doing.
Give me your real name.
So I don't know, Mr. Chair, I don't know what the appetite is, and I don't know what the right path is.
No, it's, it's fine, and I don't, I don't need to have it either way. It's, I think that we do need to have this conversation, you know? It's, it's something that moving forward, there's, you know, the state, the state's waffling, you know? It's, it's one way today, and it's another way tomorrow, and we hear that from our public health. And, and to Marita's point, you know, she uses it in one way, which I can't, I can't take from her, but at the same time, you know, the public health officials say that they can't prove it's the restaurant. The state's like, we need to punish the restaurants. And this is, and that, and that's my point by bringing this conversation up, you know? We can't just keep dodging the conversation, we need to have it, whether we disagree or agree, you know? It's how, how do we advocate for our county to go in the best course, case course forward is what, is what I'm looking for. I don't, I'm not saying this is the end-all, save-all by any means, it's just sparking the conversation. Get it?
Well, to Jack's point about what Sam said earlier today, that's, that's very true, that he did say that we could within a week or so go back to the, to the next tier, which is red, I believe, which would open things up. But there's no guarantee that the following week we wouldn't be jumped because of a spike, and he was talking about spike coming back, and what it is, that we go back into purple tier. So, so that's, I think, part of the whole confusion with people and what's getting people upset, and, and I can understand. I own a business, and my business has been affected by it immensely, and, and I don't own a restaurant, but, but it affects all of us, and it's, it's not like if you, if you drop back a year ago, March of last year, oh, this thing will be over by June, it's only gonna be till June. And June came and went, and we're still wearing masks, we're still doing this, it opened up, the people started feeling like things, the economy was gonna start going, restaurants were now getting side serving food, a spike came, holidays came, a spike came, and boom, we're shut back down. It doesn't mean if we move into another tier again that it's not gonna be the same thing, or another spike comes because of a different variant pushes things up or so. So we're, you know, I'm, I'm open to the fact of, like I said, bringing this back, send us a copy of what you read, give us a chance to look at something and put our comments on to something, and maybe have this discussion again, once we had a chance to look at the resolution you're proposing and having our comments put to it. Or at that time, we even discussed, maybe Marita can put together her thoughts on a letter that she suggested and would support, and can present at that time, we bring this back, what she's come up with on her letter that she would be willing to support.
I will do that. If there's no other comments, I'm gonna go ahead, give a opportunity for the public to comment.
There is no public comment at this time.
Understood. Understood. So this was just a discussion item. I think I'm going to go ahead and follow Mr. Toffenelli's advice for, for what I have here. I'm in full agreement that the other ones, some of the other ones are a bit strong put forward, you know? I, I think something a little more diplomatic is the way to go, and possibly a letter is the way to go if, if the rest of the board so decides. So if we do end up bringing this back, we will give an option of this or, or a letter, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep our options open on how we want to proceed.
Mr. Chair, be sure you have the clerk send the letter, or send the, the resolution, not you yourself to each of all of it.
Okay, yes.
Send it to the clerk, have her distribute it.
Absolutely, sir. Good call.
Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, be diplomatic because they do control the doses of the vaccines. And, and while I'm sure it's, it's even and equal and everybody's fine, we're also doing humans, and so, you know.
Yeah.
You understand.
Oh, absolutely. That's why.
They could do a lot of bad things to us, and they could also do good things for us.
Right. And that's also why the one you read, you heard me read, said nothing to the tune that Mr. Toffenelli had brought up with the other one he had read.
Considering we are a subdivision of the state of California, Ms. Guaramendi.
Yes, we are.
And, and please remember that we send all of the property taxes to the state, and then they send it back to us in allotments, so.
Yeah, if we're lucky. Some years, they haven't. Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and close this item. So we'll move on to supervisors' announcements in compliance with Government Code 53232.3D. Board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. Any board members? Wow, you're all very quiet. Mr. Toffenelli? Oh, that's right.
Amanda was first.
Ms. Polendor, you're first.
Um, last week, I was on a call with New Maloney's, and there were quite a few staff members from the county on there. It sounds like New Maloney's is working really well with Public Works to deal with the upcoming season that's about to happen with natural bridges. So Public Works is looking into some of the requests from New Maloney's, such as more signs along the highway for no piping, as an example. And I attended Copper opened a new hotel, or gave tours to the new hotel down in Town Square, and then Dignity Health was there this weekend as well, promoting the new health location in Town Square. And they also had models available for tour in Shadow Creek. So there's a lot of things going on in Copper right now. And then Angels had a Valentine's weekend, and we now have the Pickle Porch. So if you're down on the other side of the crossing, you can still pick up the delicious tri-tip sandwiches on that side of the county. And, and that's all I have to report out.
I'm glad someone from this side of the county can bring our excellent tri-tip sandwiches over to that side of the county. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, I attended the Mountain Valley EMS meeting last week, last Wednesday. And the contract, the actual contract with ALA for ride service for Calambers County will be coming to that board sometime in April. Once I get a copy of it, I'll make sure everybody here has a copy of it, although we don't, that board will control signing that and adopting that. At least you'll be able to see what the final outcome of that is. When we, we talked about it before, and we voted before, it was to go and accept their proposal and go into negotiations with them. So it wasn't actually the final contract. But that will be coming in April. When I get a copy of that, I will make sure everybody here gets a copy so they can look at it. The other thing I want to bring up is it's been quite a while since we've done an employee evaluation on the CAO. And I think his contract calls for us to do at least a yearly one. So I'm looking if we could take a poll to see if we want to schedule some type of employee evaluation in the near future for the CAO, if we can do that, Chair.
Yeah, absolutely. We can take a poll on Mr. Toffenelli. Are you in favor of that, Ms. Polendor? Mr. Guaramendi? Yes? Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Toffenelli? Yes? Yeah, okay, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll be working on to bring that in front of the board in the future. Is there anything else? Ms. Callaway, anything to report?
No.
All right. Well, you have a good week. And Mr. Guaramendi?
Sure.
You have a good week, and everyone else have a good week. Thank you very much.